Good evening. This is the Village Council Public Workshop. The date is June 5th, the time is 7:30. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Wintergrad.
Here.
And Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a couple of presentations we're going to start the evening with. MJ Aguilar?
Yes, yes.
Come on up.
Yes. So Paul, before MJ begins, I just want to say a couple of things. So MJ's going to introduce himself, but within Access, which meets once a month, we've had a lot of discussion on how to create an awareness about what Access does. And as this council knows and some members of the public, when we join as a council, we get to pick the committees that we want to be on. And I kind of had to fight everybody on the council to make Access mine. And by way of background, my father, Paul Cran, was a polio survivor. And, you know, not many people survive polio. He grew up in York, New Jersey. He went into the hospital with dozens of other kids and was one of the few to actually survive. And growing up, he was completely able-bodied. He was six foot five, very big guy. And that experience really made him, prior to ADA, and our whole family, think about disabilities in a different way. There were no laws in place, and there was just this general sense of if he saw someone, particularly somebody who had survived polio, there would be a lift in Access. And me and my siblings, that was just an expectation in my house. When I was in high school and the ADA was finally passed, I believe it was in the 90s, that was a wonderful moment for our country and for my family. And it really created an awareness within the United States and within government of how important it is to make sure that we're accessible to all. Later on in life, my father suffered what is called post-polio syndrome, and it's where the presence polio reappears. And my very vibrant father became permanently disabled. And again, I felt like my family was uniquely qualified for this, and we came with that vantage point. While running for council, one of the issues that I was very active in was hybrid access. And as a complement to this council and our community, upon taking our seats, we suspended like a ceremony and made sure that we have universal access to our meetings. It was incredibly important to me. I think it was incredibly important to the council and, of course, our public, not just the disabled public, but our community. And it created an awareness and discussions about disability. So within Access, when I took my seat, we do a lot in Access, but there's been this kind of rumbling amongst all the committees of we want to do more. And so it's with great pleasure that I am announcing MJ Aguilar, who I have had the luxury of working with, and this is part of our more.
Welcome, MJ.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. And I understand that you have created a new logo for Access Ridgewood.
Yes.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and about that logo?
So I just want to preface this by saying it's an honor to be here. Thank you so much for having me. Yeah, so as Ms. Wintergrad said, my name is MJ Aguilar. I'm a junior at Ridgwood High School. I'm on the football team, and I'm also on the spring track team. I'm a thrower. I throw discus, javelin, and shot put. So basically, starting in March, when I first kind of came into contact with Ms. Wintergrad, we kind of went through, in our meeting, we went through a myriad of ideas on, you know, things we could work on and what I could help with. And one of those issues was access and access for disabled people specifically in Ridgewood. So we kind of thought, well, what's a great first step there? And an Access logo to promote awareness, I think, is a phenomenal first step. So just kind of to talk about that more, our central goal is to create and foster access for disabled people in the community of Ridgewood. We feel it is crucial to establish awareness concerning people with disabilities in Ridgewood. Furthermore, one course of action, of course, was to create an Access logo that can stir up awareness for disabled Ridgwood citizens. The goal of the logo will be to promote access and create further recognition for the disabled community of Ridgewood. Utilizing the logo, the issue of access for the disabled will be amplified throughout the community. We wholeheartedly believe our Access logo will help disabled people and their families in Ridgewood. And just before I kind of get into the more specifics of the logo, I want to kind of underline you guys on some facts about disabilities that I've kind of come up across in my research. So let's just start.
MJ, just one sec. Dylan, could you put the logo up on the screen?
Thank you.
And there we go.
Thank you. So just to start, in the U.S., there's an estimated 3.3 million wheelchair users. 50.81 million Americans aged 18 and older report having some vision loss, with 340,000 reporting they cannot see at all. An estimated 43 million people live with blindness across the globe. Roughly 48 million Americans experience some degree of hearing loss, one out of five men and one out of eight women. More than 72 million people globally rely on some form of sign language to properly communicate. There are an estimated 500,000 service dogs in the United States alone. And just to cap that off, as many as 200 people live with intellectual disabilities globally. Now, obviously, we are very lucky to live in a community like Ridgewood, where we live comfortably, and I believe we are an extremely inclusive society. But these statistics, they affect our community just like any other community. And there's significant, a significant contingency of people in Ridgewood who do struggle with disabilities. You know, I have the fortune of seeing the programs in the high school that help people with learning disabilities. There's actually one student who is blind, and he's helped to take normal classes at Ridgewood. And I think those are all really great steps we've taken, but we can do more. And I think the Access logo really resembles that. Now, if you turn to the logo, I think what I love about it is you see the Village of Ridgewood logo printed in the middle, Village Hall logo that is. And I think you see big, bright blue welcoming letters, Access Ridgewood. And I think that's really friendly, and it's inviting, and it shows that Ridgewood is specifically tied to Access and is committed to it. Now, kind of based just on the statistics I mentioned, you have multiple different logos, you see a wheelchair logo, a blind logo, a sign language logo, a service dog logo, and among others there. And I think what's so good about the variety is it ties not only physical disabilities but intellectual disabilities. And that's actually something we, me and Ms. Wintergrad, first talked about, is that, you know, when coming up with something like this, you want to make sure you're helping everybody who struggles with any form of disability, and that is physical and intellectual. And just kind of a closing thought, I think this is a phenomenal first step. It really demonstrates that Ridgewood and the village of Village Hall, which has done such a great job for our community, it represents that we're committed to this, and we, as a society, can really make a change on this. Now, it doesn't mean the job is done. There's certainly more work to do, but it's a good first step. And I think it really gets people, Ridgewood citizens, involved, and it alerts them to an issue like this. And thank you so much for your time. It's been amazing working on this logo. Thank you for having me tonight.
MJ, first, let me say you are a very well-spoken young man.
Thank you.
And your volunteerism and efforts on behalf of the Access community here in Ridgewood are so greatly appreciated, especially from someone at your younger age.
Thank you.
It means more to us than you can possibly know. From my own perspective, I think that this logo is, it represents Ridgewood while at this, and it shows that this is something that the Village of Ridgewood has adopted as part of what we do. So I am very impressed, and I personally greatly appreciate this.
Thank you so much.
Comment?
This is really well-done, MJ. Really nice job.
Thank you.
Really amazing you were able to do this while a student, and really just reaffirms my belief that we have the best students, as well as the best volunteers and the best residents in the entire state of New Jersey, if not the country. But thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Great job. I appreciate it. It really is, it's perfect. I wouldn't change a thing. Thank you.
I love the openness of it, that it's welcoming and decisive as well, just in the colors, the printing, and the way it brings in so many types of people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know how I feel, MJ. It's been a pleasure. Onto our next step.
But we saved you for last.
I do want to say to the public in our sidebar conversations, I hope everybody takes the time to look at all of those, the symbols, and have some of the discussions. You know, neurodivergent is up there. We've all, Jamie Davis couldn't be here tonight, but the inclusion dinners. And, you know, begin to think about things and where we are. The sign language, one little thing that came out is that our public high school offers American Sign Language as an actual language now, and we're beginning to see more and more of that, of what people really talk about inclusion, but it only becomes inclusive when it's part of everything. So I hope everybody takes the time to do that. If you want to steal it from our social media and talk about it online, we would love that. And I'm not kidding, he'll be back, and thank you again.
Let's give this young man a round of applause. Well, that's going to be a tough act to follow. But that being said, we're going to go to the soil testing results at the Shedler property. I'd like to call up the consultants from Matrix New World Engineering. Would you come and take a couple of seats over here? And also, Mr. Rudis-Hauser and Mr. Bierwass from Ridgewood Water. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I want to begin by saying that Keith Kazmark, our village manager, was unable to be here with us tonight due to a family commitment. And Heather, who has done this, I don't know, once or twice, will be filling in for Keith tonight. Rich Calby likewise is with his family on a well-deserved vacation, and Bill Bierwass, our superintendent of Ridgewood Water, will be filling in on his behalf. I want to begin by covering an issue that has been widely discussed and disclosed. The village authorized soil testing of the berm at the Shedler property earlier this year after receiving direction from the NJDEP. The final analysis containing the results of that testing have come back and were received by Matrix, Matrix this, excuse me, yesterday. The village has yet to receive a copy of this analysis. The NJDEP notified the village late last week that this was coming. Representatives from Matrix are here with us this evening to discuss the final results of that testing, any and all safety concerns to our residents, and the steps to be taken going forward regarding further testing and possible remediation if necessary. There have been some questions regarding the receipt of this information by our village manager. I would like to lay out the timeframe of the receipt and publication of this information as follows. On May 28th, for some reason, the NJDEP first notified the Village of Ridgewood of these results, that these results were coming through Central Dispatch. They basically contacted 911. On May 29th, the DEP sent the notification letter to Heather Mailander, which she received at 5:58 a.m. Heather forwarded to Rich Calby and Chris Rudis-Hauser at 9:03 a.m. Mr. Calby forwarded the letter to Keith Kazmark that evening at 7:39 p.m. On May 30th, Keith Kazmark spent the day learning both the genesis and impact of what was contained in that letter. On that same day, Keith's office then notified all interested parties, posted the letter on the village website, and launched a link to the letter on social media before 5:00 p.m. that same day. On May 31st, Keith's office then sent out an e-notice with a link to the letter to over 7,000 email subscribers in the village. I bring this up because there is a mention in that letter of test results that were completed in an initial form on May 15th. The first notification to the village was on May 28th to Central Dispatch. The first that Keith got this was on May 29th. So, and with that, let's talk to our consultants. Would you take a moment and introduce yourselves, please?
Yes, my name is Melissa Fury.
And Melissa, if you, if everyone can speak into the mic, it works great when you speak close to it?
Got it.
When you're far away, not so much.
Understood. My name is Melissa Fury. Good. I work for Matrix Neural Engineering. I have nine years of experience with them. This is my colleague, Tom DeMichael. Sorry, I didn't mean to introduce you.
No problem. Tom DeMichael, I'm a licensed site remediation professional with Matrix New World Engineering, and I'm here to support the town.
Thank you.
I don't know if that microphone's on, or you need to be closer because it's hard to hear you.
I think you need to move closer, Tom.
Better?
Nope.
Nope.
Look how close I am. You got to get closer.
Okay.
Sorry, nature of the beast.
Sometimes it helps to hold on to the mic.
Okay, can you even hear me?
Keep too close.
You were good. You were good. And Melissa, what, did you say what your title was? I'm so sorry.
My title is a project manager.
And what do you do as a project manager?
I work with our clients to review their environmental issues, and we work concurrently with the NJDEP.
Got it. And as consultants, environmental consultants, are you also representatives, not well said, are you answerable to the DEP despite the fact that you are retained by the village and your other clients?
Yes.
Great. And I would like to cover the ground with you that I just went through. So we received that letter from the DEP dated May 29th, 2024. There have been some questions about the date the letter was forwarded to the village. Can you please walk us through that timeline?
Sure. On May 3rd, Matrix mobilized to the Shedler property to complete soil sampling. We, it took one day. We submitted our soil sample results to the lab on a standard turnaround time. On May 15th, I received preliminary data. Between May 15th and May 28th, internal discussion, analysis between, within Matrix, was had, and we decided on moving forward in a specific way. On May 28th, once we decided that, we notified the NJDEP. And concurrently with that, on May 28th, I also notified, called Chris Rudis-Hauser, who I've now learned was on vacation that day, I left a voicemail. And on May 29th, I got a phone call from Keith notifying me that they had received the...
And let me just jump in here.
Sure.
On May 28th, when you attempted to contact Mr. Rudis-Hauser, was that the first time that you attempted to notify the village or the DEP?
Yes, that was the first time.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Yes, on May 29th, Keith gave me a ring, and we discussed next steps moving forward, and that's what I understand.
Got it. And have you received the final test results, test analysis?
Yes, yesterday afternoon.
Yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
And have you actually forwarded those results to the village yet?
Not yet, no.
Great. Thank you very much. So regarding that letter, could you please outline for us in layman's terms, because some of us are a little slow, the issues raised by the DEP in that letter?
Yes, the letter is short in stating there were four compounds exceeding NJDEP standards. The four compounds were benzoylanthocyanine, benzoylpyrene, lead, and mercury.
Got it. It's my understanding that the soil from the berm at Shedler came from six distinct locations. Can you outline those locations for us here tonight and the amount of soil that came from each of those sources?
Yes. So the first site I'm going to be speaking about is a site from South Broad Street. 8,000 cubic yards of soil was imported to the Shedler property from that site. On, that soil was sampled on October 10th, 2018, and met all DEP standards. A site from Ridgewood Water Company imported 1,700 cubic yards of soil. That soil was sampled on September 14th, 2020. That soil met all DEP standards. How's, soil from housing construction on Windemere, about 320 cubic yards of soil was imported from that site. That soil was sampled on May 11th, 2021. That met all DEP standards as well. About 500 cubic yards of soil was imported from Bergen Community College. That soil was sampled on September 27th, 2019. That soil indicated marginally exceeding for mercury of the DEP standards. A second Ridgewood Water Company site imported 200 cubic yards of soil. That soil was sampled on August 9th, 2021. That soil had marginally exceeding concentrations of mercury, benzoylanthocyanine, and benzoylpyrene. The last site, the sixth site, was a third Ridgewood Water Company site, which imported 300 cubic yards. That was sampled on November 12th, 2021, which marginally exceeded standards for benzoylanthocyanine and benzoylpyrene.
Thank you so much. Have you done additional testing for these compounds on the berm?
Yes.
And can you tell me what your results were?
Our results were we marginally exceeded for benzoylanthocyanine, benzoylpyrene, lead, and mercury. Exceeded NJDEP standards.
Got it. Tell me about the test results for lead, mercury, and benzoylanthocyanine.
These, these compounds were exceeding a, they were marginally exceeding a non-health-based standard. Therefore, there's no public health concern, and there's no remediation that is necessary from this point forward with those exceedances.
So nothing else is necessary to remediate the soil for those three compounds?
Correct.
Can you tell me why?
That is because they were compared to, the DEP has very stringent standards, very low standards, and they marginally exceeded those. Because of the incredibly low standards, they, the DEP would not advise to take any action remediating them.
Great, thank you. Now, that was for benzoylanthocyanine, lead, and mercury. So we are basically done with those, correct?
Correct.
Tell me about benzoylpyrene.
So we identified exceedances, marginal exceedances of benzoylpyrene in the soil berm. They were margin, it's too soon to tell what remediation, if any, will be necessary, but at this very moment in time, there's no public health, there's no concern for public health.
Thank you so much. I'm trying to understand how all this soil was brought there in the first place. In my conversations with Mr. Rudis-Hauser, he has informed me that he utilized the residential direct contact standard to determine if we could bring the soil to Shedler. And he said that the soil was within those guidelines. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Was it for all four within those guidelines or just three?
Three.
Three. So it was within the guidelines, the residential direct contact standard, for lead, mercury, and benzoylanthocyanine, correct? What about benzoylpyrene?
It was not within the guidelines for benzoylpyrene.
Was it excessively beyond those guidelines?
It was marginally exceeding, yes.
Tell me, putting aside benzoylpyrene for just a moment, excuse me. So are there other standards that the DEP looks at in importing soil?
Yes.
Multiple standards, correct?
Correct.
If someone is not very involved in environmental regulation, something short of an LSRP, would you anticipate that that person would be aware that there are multiple standards for importing soil?
No.
Thank you. Tell me, where do we go from here? Because we have, we apparently, and I'm trying to get my arms around this, we apparently don't have an issue with the first three compounds?
Correct.
But we may have an issue with the fourth. What do we do now?
So we are planning to test the balance of the site with the proposal that you guys have, and then submit a plan of action for the benzoylpyrene to the DEP once we've completed our testing of the rest of the site.
And you are aware, of course, that we are planning on, as soon as you're done, authorizing you to continue testing the entire site?
Yes.
And that is in accordance with the recommendations made by the DEP, correct?
Correct.
Great.
We're doing exactly what the DEP requested us to do.
Do you have a timeline for this testing?
Once you give us the go-ahead, we can try and get a driller scheduled for two weeks from now, and we will get out there with a driller about that time.
And about how long would you anticipate before we get results?
So we anticipate the work to take several days. We will be submitting soil samples throughout those days. We're going to put them on a standard turnaround time, so I would say with two, within the month, two weeks from then.
Within a month, we'll know some more?
Yes.
Great. And at that point, what do we do?
Once we get those standards, we're going to come up with a plan of, or, sorry, once we get those results, we're going to come up with a plan of action for, to identify what's going on there, and then we're going to correspond with the DEP to figure out next steps.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it. I'd like to move to you, Chris, for just a moment. So tell us, what do you do for the village?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm the village engineer and the director of Public Works.
Great. And how long have you worked for the village?
Since July 22nd, 2002.
And can you give us a summary of your areas of responsibility?
I'm responsible for the engineering division. I act as the licensed engineer for the land use boards in the village, planning board and zoning board of adjustment. I also oversee the operation of the village's wastewater treatment plant and collection system. I oversee the operation of the street division, fleet services that maintains the rolling stock in the village, and the traffic and signal division that does building maintenance and puts up signs, maintains our traffic signals.
You've got a lot of stuff.
Correct.
Did you oversee the construction of the berm at Shedler?
Yes.
I am told there were six sources of the soil brought to Shedler. Can you lay out the dates and sources of the delivery of that soil and the quantities?
Okay, the first one would be South Broad Street. That was approximately 8,000 cubic yards of material. That was tested in October 2018. Once we got the results and they looked satisfactory, the import of that material started. They ran material for a number of months. It was very much predicated on the availability of their contractors and their haul trucks.
How big is the berm? How many cubic yards?
The berm in its total is about 10,000.
Okay. And 8,000 came from the South Broad Street location?
Yes.
Great. Continue.
Next location we had is from the Ridgewood Water Company. That was approximately 1,700 cubic yards. That was tested, I believe my notes say December 2018. Once we got the results and they appeared satisfactory, they started bringing the material to the site with their trucks, occasionally augmented by street division trucks.
Continue.
Next source would be from the Bergen Community College. They contributed 500 cubic yards. That was tested in September 2019. Once we got the results back and they appeared satisfactory, they arranged for it to be transported to the Shedler site.
Okay.
The next site is a single-family home construction project on Windemere. They had approached the village, they had excess material, they contributed 320 cubic yards. After testing was done in... They contributed 320 cubic yards after testing was done in May of 2021 and was found to be satisfactory. Then, we have another Ridgewood Water contribution of about approximately 200 yards. That material was tested in August of 2021, found to be acceptable, and was brought to the site. And the final location was also Ridgewood Water, a contribution of about 300 cubic yards. That was tested in November 2021, and then shortly thereafter, trucked to the site.
Thanks, Chris. Was all the soil tested by a New Jersey certified lab prior to transport to Shedler?
Yes.
Who determined that it was within DEP guidelines for use at Shedler?
I looked at the test results and compared them with a standard known as the residential direct contact limit for contamination, because we were looking at developing the parcel into a recreation facility that the children of the village are going to use. So, I felt that was an adequate standard to test against.
And can you describe a little bit about what the residential direct contact standard is?
That's a standard for contamination in soil that is at a level that is the DEP considers safe or benign for your child to play in literally.
So, is that basically what you think would be used in a park?
Yes.
Great. And were you aware that there are other standards that need to be applied for in these circumstances?
Not at that time.
Are you an LSRP, a Licensed Soil Remediation Professional?
No, I am not.
Do you import soil on a regular basis as part of the work you do for the village?
No.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Bill, how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me.
Bill, please identify yourself and your title and what you do for Ridgewood Water. If you could speak into the mic? I don't know if it's working.
There we go. My name is... I'm not a microphone operator. I am your licensed water operator and superintendent of Ridgewood Water. I do the day-to-day operations of the distribution division, the treatment division, your certified lab, and your skated division.
Sounds like you run the place.
The day-to-day.
Careful.
I'm the behind-the-scenes guy. Rich is the in-the-public guy.
So, some of the soil found at Shedler, actually, three of the sources, was found to exceed DEP standards. Where does... And some of that came from Ridgewood Water?
Yes, sir.
Where did that soil, generally speaking, come from? Where do you get this soil?
So, two of the three projects that generated bulk soil were public bids. The contractor was on cue construction. They did their independent sampling and submitted it to the village for disposal.
But I mean, what kinds of jobs do you do, generally speaking? Because I know you generate soil. So, what kinds of things do you do?
Generally, these are your hydrant replacements, your water main replacements. Lately, it's the lead service line replacements that take place in the streets. Any of your day-to-day operations of the distribution division generate bulk soil.
Is there any place where you dig up pipes?
Anywhere we dig, dig out pipes.
Got it.
Correct. In the street.
Do you know who tested the soil from the three loads delivered to Shedler from Ridgewood?
I do not. I know they are an independent laboratory, NJDEP certified, but I do not know the names of those laboratories.
Got it. Thank you so much. I want to open this up to questions from the rest of the council. Evan, you want to take off?
Yeah, no. First of all, Paul, thank you for being aggressive on this. I know I just found out about some of these results in the last few days. I very much appreciate you leaning in and very much appreciate our consultants being available to come brief us, brief the public. This is obviously an issue of concern for us. I'm... I feel better after hearing what you've said, although, obviously, there's still work here to be done. I guess my questions are, and again, Paul, I thought your question was very thorough. You were talking about to the consultants, the benzoyl-pyrene, hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correctly, being over and marginally over. Can you just give us a little more detail? How bad is it over? Is this something that the public around the area should be concerned about? Can you give us an idea, just sort of scale of the problem?
You can take that.
Okay. The benzoyl-pyrene is marginally over the residential standard. It is not a health concern at this time, just because of the use of the property. You know, this is an unoccupied property right now. Much of the exceedances that were identified are within the pile, not on the surface of the pile. So, limited contact at that point.
And is this something that we think can be remediated? I know you're going to give us a plan, but is this something that we believe can be remediated to be able to safely, and I can't stress that enough, safely build a park in that location?
Yes. There's multiple ways, but we really won't have a final plan until we do some more of the additional testing to understand how to best remediate if it's necessary.
And can you give us an idea? I don't want you to sort of get ahead of ourselves, but in similar situations, what type of remediation has been warranted and has worked?
There's multiple ways you can handle this. Simple soil capping, you know, can be, you know, we can place clean soil over the top of it.
Excuse me, can you talk a little louder?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The people in the back can hear you.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay.
Yeah, stay close to the mic. Thank you.
Simply, I mean, we can put clean soil over top of the existing soil that's there already. You know, unfortunately, create the berm, make the berm a little bigger. There's also alternate ways that we can create standards for a park. The DEP standards are based on a residential setting. With a park, there's limited exposure or much reduced exposure based on usage. So, you know, we can try to create an alternative standard, which would need to be approved by the DEP before it's accepted, and we can actually put it into use.
Okay. So, you know, I know we're going to have some other questions. You know, Paul, I do, again, thank you for leaning in on this. I think we've given the public a tremendous amount of transparency here, which is what they deserve on a project of this importance. I do think we probably, well, we should contact SHPO, just let them know about what's going on here. I think, you know, we need to be transparent with them. And I'm looking forward to getting the remediation plan from you all and the rest of the results, so we can hopefully push ahead as our residents really are demanding, we push ahead. But thank you, guys.
And actually, it's funny you say that. I want to talk about SHPO when we are done discussing this with our... With the people in front of us, because that's a separate issue.
Okay. But again, thank you guys for making yourselves available on short notice.
Thank you.
Hi. Can you tell us exactly what benzoyl-pyrene is? Like, where does it come from? How would it have gotten into the soil?
Benzoyl-pyrene is a compound that's associated with semi-volatile organics or poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons. They're basically created by incomplete combustion of organic material. So, you'd normally find them in asphalt, coal tar coatings. Like, if the city or the village does any sort of coating in the streets, it's in that material. You cook a hamburger on the weekend, you get a little grill mark on there, the nice juicy black bits that everybody loves. That's polyaromatic hydrocarbons. Their normal, everyday usage, it can come from exhaust of, you know, diesel trucks driving by on Route 17. You know, if they have incomplete combustion in the engine, these are created, you know. They are normally associated with, you know, we do quite a bit of work like this with one of the major utility companies in the state. And it's something we run into on a normal basis as they're digging through the streets. You know, you're breaking up the asphalt. They try to be as careful as possible to put that on the side, not to mix, but pieces break off and they get into the soil samples.
So, when the soil was tested before it was taken over, I know Melissa said there were traces or marginal readings for the benzoyl-pyrene. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, the readings that you had then, are they the same exact readings that you guys took? Or did the readings go higher?
They're the same tests, yes. The same analysis was performed.
Right, but is the number the same?
The number is not exactly the same, but they are very, very close.
Which number is higher, then or now?
The number that is higher...
Like, what?
I know, I understand. I'm just trying to remember. The number that is higher is the old, the older sample.
The older sample?
Which is...
So, it kind of dissipated? Or is it because it was mixed with...
It could be for that reason.
Cleaner soil, that's why the number came down?
It could be for that reason. Soil samples were collected throughout the berm at differing, varying depths. So, that's certainly one of the reasons that that could have happened.
Can exhaust fumes from diesel trucks going up and down Route 17 all day add to the contaminant in the soil?
They could. It's not saying that they will or they will not. Some of the samples that we took were from within the berm itself, like at depth. If we're going to see some sort of contribution of this material from truck traffic or anything driving by, you're going to see that more as a depositional on the surface of the berm, you know, not inside the berm itself. So, you know, it appears this is just something that came along with the soil that was imported. And as Melissa was saying, as the materials dug out, put in a truck, dumped out of a truck, moved back onto the berm, you know, it's been mixed, and that would lead to some of the lower concentrations that we've seen.
So, are we saying that, I mean, we know that it was in the soil when it came over and all the soil was tested? And were we incorrect in assuming it was meeting DEP standards? Because now it doesn't meet the standards?
Yes, you are. We also have... I don't want to get into that. There are updated standards as well.
Okay. So, technically, we probably should not have taken the soil that had this in it?
Correct.
Okay. Let me see. One thing, Tom, that you said, which got me a little nervous, I don't know. You said something about a park is reduced exposure based on limited use? Like, so are you saying if a house was built there, it would be more worrisome because somebody would live there and sleep there overnight versus somebody that's playing on a ball field three times a week, two hours each time?
Correct.
That's scary. Like, I mean, I don't care how long it is. If it's not good to be there for 18 hours, it shouldn't be good to be there for two hours.
It's all based on exposure. You know, it's, you know, the standards are based on how long somebody's going to be exposed to that particular compound.
Oh, louder, louder.
I'm sorry. It's based on somebody being exposed to one particular compound for, like you said, X amount of hours a day, X amount of hours a week over a course of many years that, you know, that the scientists have calculated these standards to.
Right. So, to me, that scares me, you know? Who decides, oh, my kid can only play there five hours a week? Because if he played there 10 hours a week, it's dangerous. Okay. Well, thank you for your information. That's all I have for right now. I appreciate it. Thanks.
I have a question for Ms. Ferry. Well, I think it's three questions. You used the term "low standards", and I wasn't quite sure whether that meant that it was an easy standard to meet or whether the figure you had to meet was a low number.
What I really, literally mean is the standard is a low number.
So, it's stringent?
A stringent, conservative standard.
And then, what lab did you use for the testing? And have you used that lab before and found them to be reliable?
Yes, we used SGS Laboratory. We use them all of the time. On almost all of my projects, we use them.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much. When will we get this report in the detail, this, I mean, the council, when will we see that?
I can put together a formal report in the next week.
Okay. And on that, you're... From what I can glean, it's... You took core samples at different depths on... Okay.
Correct.
And most of the contaminant was on the inner core in the areas that this dirt came from?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And that will be, like, detailed?
Yes, the actual depth within the berm is going to be in there.
Awesome. And then, when you speak about a cap, do you have any idea of, like, an inch surface area cap? We've had other remediation in Ridgewood that, which was coal, which, not ours, that they put the cap on. But any idea, because it already is very large, it eats up a lot of land, and I'm wondering if you know what the cap would be in terms of inches?
Right. Typically, you'll see generally anywhere from one foot to two foot of thickness.
Okay.
Of clean fill. Yeah, it's...
Wow.
Yeah.
So...
Again, it's to limit anybody from coming into contact with that material.
With this, do you have any other communities that have had a similar structure, like a berm or triangle one-to-three ratio structure that had internally contaminated soil? Have you ever had this scenario as opposed to flat surface?
Yes.
Okay. And I mean, would one of the courses of action be maybe remove the whole berm?
It could be. I mean, it comes down to a cost comparison of, you know, how the village wants to handle it. You know, some towns are... And communities are okay with just covering it. Some, you know, based on space, sometimes you want to remove part of it. You know, you may not have to get rid of all of it, maybe you get rid of part of it and then cover it. So, there's different options to look at how to handle it.
And so, with the contaminants, each of the section is clearly identified on the report, right? So, we'll be able to walk the linear, find out where it is?
Yeah, we have GPS coordinates of where the locations were.
Awesome. That's it. Thank you.
I just want to cover one piece of ground, and then we'll wrap up. Almost everybody has asked you questions about what do we do about this? And I heard a lot of maybes, and you can, and you're this, and you're that. Is it fair to say that it is premature to speculate what will need to be done until we do all of the testing analysis and analysis that's required?
Yes.
Great. I just want to say that we brought this before the council, before public comment, because we knew that this would be an issue that everyone, including everybody on this dais, is very concerned about. And so, we want everyone to know exactly what we know and what we don't know yet. What we've learned, apparently, is that there are three compounds that require no further remediation. One may or may not require remediation. Please interrupt me if I am summarizing incorrectly.
You're correct.
Thank you. Tonight, the village council is going to approve the balance of the testing as soon as we're done.
Great.
And then, you will do additional testing? You will. I believe the next plan of action is to submit to the DEP what will be done to address all of their requirements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And I can't thank everyone enough for the time that you have spent. This obviously came up very quickly for all of us. And your answers to these questions have been so important for our community to understand what's happening, where there may be a problem, and where there isn't a problem. And so, we really, really appreciate that. That being said, in light of all that's been reported to us tonight, and while we await the final matrix report, and while we await additional testing, and we obviously want to make sure that this property meets all the EP guidelines and regulations. But until that is accomplished, I would like to suggest to my council colleagues that we direct the village manager to write to the State Historic Preservation Office and request that our park development project at Shedler be held in abeyance until we can address the soil issues at Shedler. In my opinion, it is the only responsible thing to do. The berm was created five or six years ago, but we are here on this council now, and we have to address this. We have an obligation to correct this issue and ensure that we abide by all DEP standards, regulations, and directives. It is my strongest recommendation that we hold off on this application, but I absolutely want to hear from my council colleagues. Evan?
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree. We absolutely need to make SHPO aware. Listen, you know, from what I'm hearing, that we have a marginally... We have a chemical that is marginally higher than an already strict standard. But this is going to be for the benefit of our community, and we got to get it right. You know, the project has been, what do we have, 15, 16 years already? You know, the project has been, what do we have, 15, 16 years already? I want to get this done as soon as possible, but I agree, we need to abide shipo of these issues. And then I think once we get the final results and remediation plan, move aggressively to get that remediated so we can then go forward. But certainly, I don't think we can put shovel and ground until these issues are resolved.
Safety comes before else, so no brainer.
Thank you.
Yeah, as much as I would like to hurry the Shedler project along, I think we have to meet the DEP requirements.
Clearly. I mean, it's got to be safe. This is a problem that we didn't create, but this council's going to fix it, and the public is going to watch and be made aware every step of the way. And I just think it's also important to note that, you know, depending on the remediation, you know, the cap could encroach even more. And if the berm is removed, it can free up, so it can impact the ultimate design and even the stress on the house. So, yeah, of course, for all the reasons, and thank you again for your time.
And with that, I'm going to ask you to stick around for just a moment while we authorize you to take the next step. So Heather?
Yes, so the proposal is from Matrix is to conduct the additional soil sampling investigation work for all areas that have imported fill on the Shedler property. And as we know, they've been sampling the soils on the berm site. This is an amount not to exceed $58,180. So as long as the council is okay with this, we will do this at our special public meeting after public comments.
Can we bump this up ahead of public comments?
If the council is amenable to that, yes, we can.
This will be quick.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear public comment first.
Yeah, I think it would be best to hear the public comment first.
Absolutely. Then I will excuse you because this may take a while. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just for clarity, I mean, I think it's, I'm going to speak out of turn. I think we all agree we need to authorize the payment to allow them to do the further testing. I don't think there's any dissent there.
No.
Certainly welcome up for public comments, but I want to be very clear before we start engaging with my comments. I think we have unanimous consent here that we're going to push ahead with the soil testing. We're going to, tonight, authorize the payment of those funds so that we can get on this as soon as possible. How we do it in order, I guess I'm agnostic too, but I want to be clear that I think we're all in agreement on this.
I'm in agreement of the testing. I'm in disagreement of where the money's coming from, as I stated last week. And I spoke with our CFO today, and I asked him if there was any reason we couldn't use part of the money that was already put aside for Shedler. And as I thought last week, anything is possible. We could repurpose one of the ordinances. Specifically, we put $500,000 aside in the 2023 budget, and $111,000 has been spent on that. So there is a balance of like 389, give or take. There might be some bills that haven't come in. So I would love to take the money from there rather than putting money from next year's capital budget, you know, depleting that already by $350,000. So I'm totally against where the money is coming from. I think we need to be more responsible and do better due diligence. And we've already appropriated money for Shedler that we could use for this without affecting our capital budget for next year.
So I just, Lorraine, love you. But you can't, you can't say, you can't say safety comes first and then not pay for it. We can't have 9,000 hours of public hearing, establish capital, send mailers and say, this is where you're going with money, and then change it. This is going to be extra. The whole community needs to understand, welcome to expensive. It's an expensive project, and it's going to be more expensive. And our community is aware of this. Look what happened at Orchard. Orchard initially went in for about a half a million dollar-ish, and it exceeded it by 45%, and it's still not open.
I get that, but let's use the money we've already appropriated.
But then why, if you felt that way, why didn't we take, if we could be so loosey-goosey with capital and we had all those public hearings, why bother? That money during the budget was clearly delineated in the public eye. And now the public thinks the budget's a set. Hey, heck, why don't we take it from sidewalks? There's an idea. Can we move it from there? We can't do that. That's not fair to the public. It's not fair to the budgeting process. It's just, it's a slippery slope if you say to councils, you know, everybody, and capital, capital for our community is like the Hunger Games. I say it all the time. It's really very, it was, I'm a new council member, but it's stunning because everybody comes up a little short. And for us to do that would be wholly unfair. Evan, back me up here to the budgeting process in general, to the mailers that we sent. And again, welcome to expensive. Like I said before, two people in this town objected to that berm when they were citizens, me and the lovely octogenarian there. We, there was a rally cry from at least two members about the berm and consideration with that. And now we have to deal with it. And when we deal with it, we have to pay for it. We have to. You can't tout safety and not pay for it. It's like saying, okay, we want public safety, but we're not going to hire cops. That's really not, we can't do that. So if you're going to vote no, then you're voting no to testing, experts. I mean, we don't have a, we don't have the skill set. I mean, we have lovely skill sets over here, but they don't have the credentials to do this. They just don't. That's the way the technical industry works. If you have a BS, you can do it. If you don't, you can't. So I hope you join us in voting yes. And if you don't, it's not really fair to say that you're that interested in the safety. Sorry.
I'm not saying I don't want to do it. I definitely want to do it. It's just where the money comes from. We've already put money aside we can use. It makes no sense to me whatsoever to take $350,000 off of our capital budget, our starting capital budget next year.
I mean, I agree completely with Siobhan on this. First of all, this has to get done. You have to do this. That's a no brainer. But if we're going to be so, use your legal term, loosey-goosey, that we're just going to sort of make it up as we go along and move money as we see fit, then what is the point of having budget hearings? What is the point in having discipline around our budget? This was an unforeseen expense that this council did not cause. This was caused by prior issues. But Siobhan is like, we are going to fix it. And this is now a new expense that we will have to pay for in order to make this property safe. And to sit there and say we're going to go back and revisit the budget that we spent four or five, you know, hearings, multiple hours on, and just move money left to right, just be able to make candidly a political point? I can't agree with that. Safety is more important. Having disciplined budget is more important. I'm absolutely voting for this, and we have to do this the right way.
I'm not asking to move money from one thing to another. The money's already in Shedler. You know, it's there. I'm not asking for it to be taken away from paving the roads or something like that or planting trees. It's already in Shedler. Let's use it. It's sitting, you know, it's whatever. I mean, we can talk till we're blue in the face.
We can, and let's, and let's, let's continue.
I just, can I add one point? It is taking away from trees because Shedler has a rebudgeted of a replant, and it is taking away from painting. That project is a project in its hole. West Saddle River Road hasn't been paved because that's part of the project, including the bump outs. So it is taking away from trees. If you want to chip away at the 1.9 remaining capital for Shedler, that's just saying, I really don't want to build the park. That's what you're doing, because you're going to eat it and eat it, and then you're going to make it, fighting for the money that the rest of the community has already thought that the field is funded, my shade tree peeps, they're expecting a replant. And if you take the money and you move it elsewhere, $300,000 is a lot of trees.
Pam?
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor. And the reason that I disagree with you, Lorraine, respectfully, is that Shedler's not a big pot of money. It's X amount of dollars was allocated for sidewalks, X amount of dollars was allocated for field, X amount of dollars was allocated for each thing in there. These are new issues that have come up. And by taking the money that was allocated and approved by this council and prior councils for specific projects within Shedler, we are, I didn't even know if we're allowed to do that, but even if we are, that's not what that money was bonded for. It was bonded for specific things in Shedler. It's not that someone said, oh, no, no, let's put two and a half million dollars in there, and that should build a park. That was there, there were specific amounts to do specific things. These are new things. And so with that, I think we have a consensus. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all so much for your time. You are all excused. But we really appreciate your coming out, especially on such short notice so that we can let our public know what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to public comment.
All speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd A. Loving, 342 South Irving Street. Felt like I was in LA law, put it that way. Three compounds that require no remediation. Is that your consultant's opinion, or does that need to be approved by the NJDEP? That question was not answered. Your consultant said so, but when this plan, does this plan need to be submitted to the NJDEP? And will NJDEP say the same thing? That is, that you have identified three contaminants, and at this time, it would appear, appear, that you have no plans to remediate based upon the levels. Will NJDEP approve that? By the way, there is a term that we heard frequently during the height of COVID, and the term was abundance of caution. If you choose not to remediate those three compounds because your consultant says you don't have to do it, it would be my personal opinion that you are not using or exercising an abundance of caution. We have learned this evening, I think, because no matter how many times we said in the back of the room that we could not hear, I believe what we heard tonight is that there were three sources of material that at the time the testing was performed on those sources of material, the material was found to marginally exceed NJDEP requirements. I believe that's what we heard. Yet, yet, the material was dumped at Shedler even though it marginally exceeded requirements. I believe we also heard your consultant indicated that that should not have happened. But it did. The question remains, how and why did that happen? The manager has indicated in the past that he has no intent of conducting any sort of investigation into that matter or any matter concerning the dumping of materials at Shedler. But again, we have heard this evening that three loads, identifiable loads, marginally exceeded NJDEP requirements, and the consultant that you have contracted with, we believe, I heard the person say this evening, that that should not have happened. I'm uber disappointed that that happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd.
Jacqueline Holm, 30 Carriage Lane. Since the project is on hold, I agree with Councilmember Lorraine Reynolds not to bond for the $350,000. Use the funds that are put aside for Shedler. We now know that that can be done. That's fiscally and fiduciarily responsible. Matrix seems to be unaware that the park is open and being used by the public. They said they had no concern for public health because the park wasn't being used at the time, and it is. So someone needs to ask them again and/or put a sign up at Shedler telling residents to not use the park because their statement was made based on that the park is not currently open or being used. They also said that the combustion coming off of Route 17 can cause these dangerous chemicals, which again is another need that we have stated for years and was ignored by this council, not a previous council. I have sent notification after notification that we need studies from what's coming off of that roadway. And if you don't do the studies, that's borderline criminal, knowing what we know today. A study is needed to know what's coming off of the highway and how it's going to affect and impact the park users. They specifically said it would sit on the surface. The amount of soil we should have never accepted. The bulk of it came after the berm was built. An investigation needs to be open on this. This council can order the village manager to do so. We've heard here, and just adding up simple math, it comes to about 11,020 cubic yards. Soil weighs about 2,200 pounds per cubic yard, so that's 11,020 cubic yards. Approximately 24.3 million pounds of dirt was brought in and dumped, mostly after the berm was built. We already know that it's not just the berm that needs to be tested, but that we also need to test the parcel. So this project is going to go on for a really long time. So why hold up the money that we currently have and put the burden on the taxpayers for the 350K to do these studies? Use the money that you have in escrow. And once you have an idea of what's going on, and you properly, thoroughly investigate how it happened, why it happened, and exactly what we're dealing with, not just the berm. The berm and the entire parcel, as outlined in the letter, has to be tested for the soil. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Good evening. Steve Kim, 291 Island Avenue. When I hear the word incredible or incredibly low, it, like, I use that word for, like, the weather is incredibly warm. Or my kids would say, Dad, you're incredibly annoying. I generally don't use that word for a DEP standard. Standard is there to be met. Standard is there for a reason. They don't kid around, right? So that number is there. So I don't know what she meant, the consultant, when she said it's incredibly low. Is that her opinion? Is that your opinion? Or is that the NJDEP's qualification? So we can't take exceptions. We can't go willy-nilly on this stuff. There is a standard. We need to meet that standard. There is absolutely no exception to that rule. I would like to get the qualifications of the Matrix, I think it's Matrix, personnel just to understand what they've done in the past, what their education is. Because what they've said over here is not really giving me too much confidence in what they can do. So if you could publish that or post that or make it available through Oprah, I guess Oprah's gone now, but, you know, maybe we can get it done before, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Cynthia O'Keefe, 542 West Saddle River Road. So in listening to Matrix, one thing that came to mind is the woman, I don't know her name, but she's a project manager. I'm also a project manager, and I would in no way be qualified to, you know, deliver information and tell the public or the council that there is no harm and no danger unless there was a medical person or some kind of scientist that works within Matrix that could attest in writing, whether that's a subpoena or whatever. You know, I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, I'm less concerned with the actual timeline of who got what letter. you know, I'm less concerned with the actual timeline of who got what letter when, and more concerned with, you know, especially because we live right there, more concerned with the fact that, you know, there are chemical compounds that could, once again, get into the groundwater. So my question for you tonight is, with the expanded testing, obviously with the first set of testing, you had some criteria to say, oh, here are some compounds, and here are the guidelines, right, wrong, or indifferent. How do we know with the illegal dumping, which we do know happened on that property, what those compounds are? Is there a laundry list of tests? Is there 100 compounds that they check for? I would like an answer to that. I think that's very important for the neighborhood, for anybody going to the park now or in the future. So, you know, two things, if you can give us some kind of attestation in writing that there is no imminent danger to the dirt, to playing on it, to dogs walking on it, to it getting into the groundwater, that would be really helpful. And, you know, with regard to the budget, I'm not a, you know, a finance person, per se that I understand bonding and, you know, all the logistics that go along with how you allocate monies. But my question would be, you know, when we were at the point last year where, you know, we were in a very uncomfortable position, where the village did not have a lot of money, we were at that, like, critical juncture where there could have been a furlough, and then, you know, people showed up, and there was a ground swell of concerned people who needed to pay their bills and take care of their families, and then we found the money. So how did that happen? That's a conundrum. I don't understand it. Again, I'm not a, you know, in the books, in the weeds. It'd really be helpful to have, like, municipal government 101 for people who need to understand where that money comes from, and why we need to protect, like, cookies with kids and protect that Shedler budget, and not release it because it might not come back, or whatever the, there's a fear there. I'm sensing it. I don't know, it's coming across to me, maybe it's coming across to other people. So if you're very protective of that budget that you have, I understand bond monies are specifically allocated, and Lorraine spoke about the 5% last week, but if you could find money for a furlough, I mean, I don't see why you can't find money for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Ann Loving, 342 South Irving Street. A couple of comments in no particular order. Councilwoman Reynolds spoke with the CFO, and he said that money could be rearranged from money that's already in Shedler. And yet, some of you are suggesting that it absolutely cannot. So are you saying that the CFO is wrong, and that money can't be taken from money that was already allocated for Shedler? Councilwoman Winograd basically said that Councilwoman Reynolds is not concerned about safety. That is really inflammatory. She is not saying not to test for the soil. None of us is saying that the soil shouldn't be tested, but many of us are saying that it is fiscally irresponsible to take out a $350,000 bond when there is other money that the CFO has said can be used. I said this two weeks ago. You might be planning a project at your house, and you're going to remodel your kitchen, and you have X amount set aside, and suddenly your roof leaks. Well, guess what? You take money from your kitchen plan, and you fix the roof, because that has to be done. This soil testing and remediation has to be done, but you don't have to take more money, and you sure as heck don't have to accuse one of your elected council people of not having any regard for citizen safety. That's outrageous. She deserves an apology for that. Another thing I'd like to say is this presentation smacked of a performance to me. Somebody, might have been my husband, said it looked like L.A. Law. I'm not accusing anybody of lying, but it sure looked to me, like the mayor, had scripted everything, had practiced what the answers were going to be, asking Mr. Rudis Hauser these questions and so on. It was a performance. It was really, it was a pretty good performance, but it was a performance. And I don't think it was transparency at all. I think it was all just an act. And I implore you to do the right thing. Don't do this bond. Take the money that Bob Rooney said you can get, which we already have. The project's going to be delayed anyway. By your own admission, it has to be delayed. Just take the money, fix what has to be fixed, and then we'll worry about the rest of the park development once the soil has been addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
I promised Cynthia I'd stick to the script, but listening to some of his comments, I'm not sure I'm going to live up to my promise. Anyway, to turn to happier matters. The mayor's State of the Village address was a wonderful compliment to the council's initiative to keep the residents informed. I suggest a further initiative to inform and update residents of Ridgewood. And this could be called Ridgewood Works, and could be snippets of good things that are happening around town. For instance, the garden around the stable, it is a beautiful piece of landscaping that we should all be proud of. Kudos to Nancy Bigos and her park and rec team for succeeding in tapping Ridgewood's major asset, the limitless talent of its volunteers, including the Conservancy of Ridgewood Public Lands and the Women Gardeners. The recycling center is another Ridgewood Works. I went there last week and was most impressed by how tidy and clean the place looked. Plus, it now accepts more and more items for recycling. Kudos to Sean Hamlin and his team. Lastly, kudos to Keith Kazmark for discovering who at Village Hall is in charge of repaving our streets and getting them to repave miles and miles of village streets, including the three streets of the CBD. We can now, we can now be very proud of our infrastructure. Now, as far as Shedler, my favorite movie of all times is Casablanca. And my favorite scene in Casablanca is the chief of police who basically says, I'm shocked, 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 there's gambling in the back. I don't believe these comments. Where were these people four, five, six years ago, when the place was turned into a dump, where the berm was built on the sly and on the cheap? Now, all at once, oh my God, it's the end of the world. I'm sorry. You guys are doing a great job, and Paul, I want to congratulate you for the way you handled the questioning. I really want to congratulate you. And you are a man of goodwill, and no, you did not script it at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rorick. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll go to public comment. Denise, you're up. You're on mute? Oh, wait, no, we lost you, Denise. You know what? There you go. You're all set.
Super. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for letting us speak. First, I just wanted to say the presentation-
Would you please state your name and address?
Yes, thank you, Heather. Denise Leema, 319 East Glen Ave. First, kudos out to MJ with the Access logo. I was impressed by him, his presentation. I love that it's a complimentary of mental and physical. Sign language is hugely important. For me, I've actually had to learn it recently, as both my nieces were born with severe hearing impairment, so I thought that was really great to listen to today. And I am also, too bad Keith's not there, great to see all the infrastructure changes, especially the paving is well overdue. First, let me just talk about Shedler and the use of the word marginal by the consultant several times. I don't really know the relevance or why that's being brought in. And what was concerning is, they said they spent two weeks analyzing the data, and realized then that they wanted to continue to report it out to the NJDEP. So, you know, they're using the words marginal, but still wanting to report it out, so I don't understand what it is. It's either a violation or not. It's a standard or it's not. We have ordinances, we don't allow residents to marginally violate the land variances, right? It's, they're standards. So I, I think, I think we, you know, NJDEP also seemed to be so concerned with the four compounds, that now they want the rest of the property to be tested. If it was marginal, we wouldn't be worrying about it, we wouldn't be doing another, like, level of testing. So, you know, it's just above, it's just marginal, it's just a little chemical, you know, it is violation. Let's call it what it is. So look forward to the next round of testing. And to use the words that councilman said, you know, this is welcome to expensive. You're right. And so when we think about the town garage, this is another welcome to expensive. Remediation isn't going to be cheap. I don't understand why we bought the property. I haven't spoken about this in a while, but, you know, there was zero transparency there. All of a sudden, we bought it. Now we're going to spend a lot of money, so I don't understand what we're doing with that property, what the intent is. Is it revenue generating, a pocket park, a garage? Like, what are we doing? And I'm going to continue to ask about the master plan. So we started this in August of 2017, spent almost a million dollars, approved it in 2022. This council has been operating under it for two years. We don't know who's in the reexamination committee. We don't know how often they're meeting. We've heard zero results or updates. Pam and Siobhan, you keep talking about, we're meeting, we're going to meet, we're going to give a presentation, we're going to, we're going to. You know, at the end of the day, there's been zero things happening in our minds for two years. And a lot of residents spent a lot of time trying to help structure and craft that master plan, and attending meetings and workshops, and there's still no update. So again, I don't, I don't know, but, you know, we, everything we do in the village-
Denise, your time is up. If you could finish up, please.
Everything we do needs to tie back to the master plan, and it's oh-so important, but we're not talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Jan, you're up.
Okay, I'm unmuted, correct?
You're good.
Thanks. Jan Phillips, 234 Union Street, obviously Ridgewood. And Paul, I just want to say thank you for doing such a clear walkthrough of all of the issues and asking important questions. And I'm sorry for those village residents who are present and had difficulty hearing here, on, obviously online, or on television I have on as well. Everything, every word was so clear. And the other thing I want to say is, Siobhan, thank you for really putting a focus on how important the budget process is, and how important that is to the residents who, you know, might not be vocal today or online. And to follow up on something that Rorick said, and there is, like, great joy happening in our committee, in our community. Tonight, the Access Committee student, he's a volunteer, presented a Village Access logo that he was so passionate about doing. And aside from this being a symbol of the welcoming and acceptance of our diverse community, it's such a powerful weave of our intergenerational community. I loved the student interns and the volunteers and seniors sharing their talents and resources. It's an important and empowering happening within our environments, and it's easy to lose, you know, sight of that. Saturday, our village manager, our mayor, our deputy mayor, our county commissioner, who single-handedly made pride her commitment to Bergen County, and the director, or one of the directors of the Ryan White Fund for New Jersey Buddies gathered in the park to be a symbol and to weave those vital fabrics of community. It was a welcoming, accepting, diverse community happening. There were student musicians, there were community musicians, and it all underscores the powers of intergenerational community. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Committee will be weaving those community strands with the celebration of Juneteenth, which this village council made a holiday. And so just a reminder, and you'll keep your eye out for advertisements, June 21st, 6:00 PM, at the Ridgewood Library, MLK Committee is bringing back Russell Berry and a re-showing of his MLK Standing Room Only film, Juneteenth. And this is just one more committee that students participate in, and, you know, there were two amazing students that came out to, that came out to the Pride Village Celebration. And they were so excited to, one, be able to just offer their services, but they were so excited to meet our village council elected officials. And you were all so warm and inviting to them. One is a transplant from Australia, the other one from California, and, you know, they wandered in the park and said, excuse me, ma'am, how can we be of help? Like, that's our community, and this village council's making that happen. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jan. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to respond to a couple of the comments made tonight. Boyd, you asked about the three compounds that require no remediation. Anything that requires no remediation, everything that we do will be done according to and with the approval of the DEP. And I believe that that is what the people from Matrix said specifically, that this is something that they were able to calculate according to DEP guidelines. It must ultimately be approved, but according to what they said, it will be. How did it get there? How did this soil get there? I specifically asked Mr. Rudis Hauser that, and he said he applied one standard, and there were multiple standards that needed to be applied that he did not because he was not familiar with. That's how it got there. And yes, we all wish that the prior administration had not approved bringing it over there. Jackie, you mentioned something about, and I know you're not here, but I'll say it anyway, that the entire parcel be tested. That is what we're going to be doing tonight. We're approving the entire parcel being tested to ensure that it is safe for everyone. Steve, you mentioned that we cannot go willy-nilly on anything here. I absolutely assure you that no one on this council will be doing anything willy-nilly relative to DEP regulations, because our power mount concern is safety. And so we will be doing everything necessary to ensure that the DEP approves this property. As far as their qualifications, I'm sure they're all online, and you can look them up. If you have trouble with that, we would be happy to help beyond that. But I would say that that is the first step. Cynthia, you mentioned that we need medical professionals here to ensure that what is being done is being done correctly. These people that were here today are scientists, and they are scientists who deal specifically with these issues. They are more qualified than anyone. And any, and remember, they are, as they said, answerable to the DEP. LSRP, as Tom is, is a licensed soil remediation professional. They are licensed by the DEP. Ann, you mentioned that we said that we cannot take the money. I didn't say we cannot. I said I wasn't sure if we cannot, but I said we should not. We absolutely should not, because that money was allocated by this and prior councils for specific purposes within the park. And that's why we shouldn't do it, because if we do that, then we are taking away the will of those councils who approved, voted- and approved on doing these things. And as far as whether or not this was a scripted performance, I sat for many, many hours with all four of these people in order to learn enough so that I could ensure that everyone in the audience and at home learned what I learned. And that's what I did. And I'm sorry if you feel it was scripted. I made sure that it was comprehensive. Did I answer every person's question? Probably not. But all of those questions were questions that I had asked, and those were answers that they gave me. So I spent quite a bit of time, as you may or may not appreciate, to get this out to the public, and we moved it up ahead of public comment so that your questions during public comment would have better perspective and have more information. Because if we did it after public comment as it was originally scheduled, you would have been asking questions that maybe you would have gotten some interest in. That's my response. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I just want to clarify. I know the numbers are being thrown around. The testing that we're going to approve tonight is for $58,000, not 350 some odd thousand dollars. I think that's important. I am struck by, you know, I was somewhat optimistic when I saw the new agenda in that I know there's been so much demand by the folks that have opposed the Shedler project all along to do soil testing, to bring in experts, to do studies. And we do those studies, we get the answers, we're fully transparent in putting them all out in front, and then rather than respect the results of the experts who are responsible to the DEP, and that was their words tonight, not ours, we take issue with their findings. You know, I'm going to say the thing out loud that we're not supposed to say out loud, but I think a lot of this is just opposition to the overall Shedler project. And we've had that fight. We've come out as a council where we are. We're going to push forward with that, but I think, as Paul eloquently put, the budgeting was done to build the park, and that's what that money was voted on, and that's what that money is set aside for. We absolutely need to do this remediation, but that can't come from there. It should not come from there. And again, Paul, I want to thank you for leaning in on this. I found the comments instructive. I found it thorough. I found it a very good use of everyone's time rather than fiddling around, asking, you know, undirected questions and appreciate the transparency. It's not the answers I would have wanted. I would have loved if we would have gotten a clean bill of health tonight. That would have been great. That's not what happened. We're going to push forward and fix prior mistakes, but I'm going to accept the results of what the experts have told us. I'm going to respect the opinions of the scientists who know more than I and probably most people know about this, and I'm going to build a park, vote to build a park as safely and as expediently as possible.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a question. For the grid sampling, the 58,000, where's that money coming from?
That's in your, from the bond.
Is it part of the three?
Yes, it's part of the bond.
It's part of the 350.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So I'm going to start with Evan, and I'm going to be really available, probably get it tomorrow. I agree with Evan. It's disheartening to hear clamoring for subject matter experts and to bring in a firm that is highly accredited and then have not only the firm questioned, but individuals questioned. I thought they did a wonderful job. I think they're the right hire. For the record, we've already invested $39,000 with Matrix. That was the initial berm testing. The grid floor is about 59. They're very lovely people. They have skill sets. We vetted them. We, you know, we've heard, don't go with this, this. And it just seems that whenever we respond to the public inquiry and we do it, it seems that the people we bring in kind of get in the crosshairs of the aims. So that was extremely disappointing to me. Matrix is highly qualified, and I think this full council is grateful for their time, and we look forward to working with them. In addition to that, just in lay terms, if Matrix reports back to the DEP, if there were a public health concern, DEP would shut that park. It would be closed. It would be like lights out, the park would be closed, and they would deal with that. DEP is a highly regulatory agency, and they're the ones who are using these words of, you know, minimum standards, stringent standards. And I just want to be clear that ultimately, if there was any public health risk, they would close it, and we would obviously comply. With respect to financing, I'm going to get to this in a minute, but when we talk about furlough, there's always this conflation of things. Furlough goes to the operating budget. What we're arguing about with project management is capital. So capital spend is roughly seven and a half million every single year. It doesn't impact the tax basis. That's not, wasn't part of the furlough discussion. They're kind of being crossed over. With respect to Denise and the Yee Town Garage, property is always discussed enclosed, so I want to make that clear, that sometimes, you know, you'll hear about property and it's being discussed and not out here because we don't discuss it out here. We discuss it enclosed, so that's not lack of transparency. That's actually a good idea because it can affect the value of the property we may or may not be buying. And in addition to that, we do have an update on the master plan because we had a really good meeting. And lastly, I also want to say, I made a joke today about Paul. I said, we can't call Paul because he is working on his homework assignment. And he did take the time today. We all have busy lives. We all have tried to, this is a lot of information for us to process. We can't meet more than one or two. And I spoke with Paul before 9:00 AM this morning, which breaks the rule, and he said, after 11:00, I'm going to be writing my thoughts. So scripted, yes, he took the time to do it, delivered it well. A performance that's just sort of insulting. I don't know, too, if we're allowed to do this. Heather, maybe you can say. I don't know if Bob wants to come up and explain some of the bonding to us, or we could put that on a future agenda because I'm a little concerned with some of the statements made up here and also with Lorraine. We do work really well together. I'm surprised that there was information provided by council, not by our CFO, to all of us. And had I heard that statement earlier, Lorraine, I would have fact-checked it with Bob because I don't want to bring him up because that might put him in an uncomfortable position.
He's fine. He can come up.
Okay.
But are you done? I mean, we'll wait till everyone's done, and then we'll bring him up.
I could keep going, Heather, but no.
Heather, don't encourage her, okay? And by the way, I like the way Heather puts you in the crosshairs. He's fine. You good? Anybody else? Good.
Can we hear from Bob?
Let's hear from Bob.
Sarah, you're right, Bob, for showing up.
Good evening, Bob. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, everyone. I have to make sure next time I reschedule my discussion of financial statements on a night that doesn't have too much heat to it. I just want to give some clarification on the capital budget process and this conversation Lorraine and I had. First of all, it's my policy that whenever a council member approaches me about a topic and we have a conversation and I give a reply, I discuss with the village manager. I have not had that opportunity this evening, obviously because he's not here, but that's just what I do so that we're all on the same page. And if he feels it has to be disseminated to other members of council, then that's his prerogative. As far as the capital process goes, when we have an ordinance and we introduce it, it's for a specific purpose or range of purposes. So in the Shedler example, we had an ordinance to acquire the land. The land was financed by bonds and notes. It was financed by Capital Improvement Fund, financed by grants. We then moved on to the house. We then moved on to the field. And now we're moving on to another aspect of it that's being required to get it in the condition that we need to have it. So each one of those has a purpose. They're not interchangeable, so to speak. Some of them are written in broad terms that can encompass several other processes. For example, you may have engineering costs, you may have surveying costs, you may have related costs as far as getting the house to where it needs to be or constructed or any one of those aspects. So when we came to this conversation about, do we have money elsewhere? We do have funds that are not spent. No one has told me I don't need them anymore. Okay? So no one has come back and said, you know, we have the million nine, but we only need a million, so 900,000 we can cancel and do something else with? I haven't heard anybody say that at all because we don't know what the costs are going to be when we ultimately get to the end of this process. Tied into that is timing. This soil testing is critical to get it done and get it moving forward so we can meet all the timetables that shit was put on us. Okay? If we were to take the route that Lorraine and I talked about, which was a possibility, and that would be to cancel proceeds that are not used, then reappropriate them with another ordinance, we're down the road a couple of months, and that isn't something that I think we want to do right now. So we did talk about timing. We did talk about how you can do it, and I said to you, there's always ways of doing things, but they're not always done timely. So in this situation, no one has said, we don't need this money. We appropriated for a reason. We did it by estimate. So therefore, in my mind, everything is where it should be. The ordinance would need to go through just the way it is right now, so we'll have the funds available to keep moving forward and meeting all the timetables.
Very helpful, Bob. Very helpful.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. And so with that, let's go to our manager's report.
Okay, our village manager, Keith Casmark, has left this report for me to read. The main topic to be covered tonight was addressed in the report by Matrix concerning the soil testing at the Shedler property. We are pleased that the streets and the CBD have been resurfaced and now striped. We want to thank everyone for their patience as the contractor performed much of the work during the overnight hours. The Zabrowski Shedler House Open House is this Saturday, June 8th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Spots for 30-minute tours are still available, and you can sign up through the village website. The community meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers will be held on Monday, June 17th, from 7:30 to 9:30 PM, right here in the courtroom. Representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers will be present and will present how they can be helpful with flood mitigation, both short to medium term and long term. There will then be a public comment portion of the meeting. Hybrid access will be available similar to a village council meeting. Those residents impacted by flooding are encouraged to attend. We would like to thank American Legion Post 53 for their moving service on Memorial Day. It was a great tribute to all those we lost defending our nation and protecting our freedom, liberty, and way of life. This past weekend was very active here in the village with the opening of Graden Pool, Pride Day, the kickoff concert in Park Saturday evening, the Holy Festival, and the Law Enforcement and EMS Appreciation Mass. It was such a great weekend celebrating so many aspects of the community. The Ridgewood Guild sponsors Music in the Night for the 14th season and will provide music in various locations on Friday nights through Labor Day. Music at the Park sponsored by Destination Ridgewood will be taking place on Saturday evenings from 7:30 to 9:30 PM at Memorial Park of Van Ness Square. June 8th is the 11th. June 15th is Thursday Evening Collective. June 22nd, Mary's Basement. And June 29th is the Racket. Please plan to come and shop, dine, and enjoy the entertainment this summer. The 66th Annual Free Summer Concert Series has started at the Cash Shell here in Veterans Field. Please bring a chair or blanket. The concerts begin at 8:30 PM unless noted and are scheduled for every Tuesday and Thursday in the months of July and August. There are no concerts on Tuesdays in June. The performance on Thursday, June 6th will be Ridgewood High School Band's Tunes in June, and on June 13th, Ridgewood High School Art Beat 2024. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring free movies in the park again this summer, Wednesday nights at 9:00 PM in Memorial Park of Van Ness Square. June 12th is Mulan. June 26th, 42nd Street. July 10th, Barbie, special event. July 24th, Mary Poppins. August 7th, The Batman. And August 14th, the day after tomorrow. The movies in August will begin at 8:15 PM. Graden Pool is now open daily from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. These will be the hours for the entire season through Labor Day, September 2nd. Bergen County Utilities Authority Recycling Event will take place on Sunday, June 9th at Bergen Community College, which is located on Paramus Road, and you can only enter through that entrance for this event from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Bring your paper for shredding, limited four bags or boxes weighing no more than 10 pounds, electronics, computers, tire recycling, and unwanted medication. Bring medication in the original containers or in a sealed bag. Sharps and liquids will not be accepted. Village Hall Council upcoming meetings are broadcast live from the Village Hall courtroom on the village website and Channel 34 on FiOS. They are also available on Zoom or by phone or YouTube. The upcoming meetings next week, June 12th, is the village council public meeting. June 26th is the village council work session. July 10th is the village council work session. July 17th is village council public meeting. All meetings begin at 7:30 PM. On a sad note, I do want to state that former mayor Bruce Byers passed away on May 9th. He founded his law firm here in Ridgewood in 1962. It's now known as Byers &amp; Byers. He was the planning attorney, planning board attorney in Ridgewood. He then was on the council as a council member from 1982 to 1984, and he was mayor from 1984 to 1986. He has been a resident of Cornwall, Vermont since retiring in 2000, which is near his beloved alma mater, Middlebury College, and where his dedication to community continued. He helped in the restoration of the Town Hall Theater in Vermont, raising funds, serving on the board of the association raising the funds, and giving pro bono legal services to bring the jewel back to life. He also obtained his bartending license so that he could do so in the theater. Former mayor Bruce Byers leaves a legacy of kindness, community service, and a love of life. He was 90 years old.
Thank you, Heather. Council reports. Siobhan.
Okay. So last week, Pam and I, Matt Pam is the liaison to open space, and I am the liaison to Parks and Recreation, and we had a joint meeting discussing many things, the importance of the open space tax and the, where it's actually going. Because we've had two large purchases, both Havernickel and Shedler with open space tax. It was a great meeting. Matt Lindenberg put together a very thoughtful presentation, and I was grateful to have the chance to be in the meeting with Pam and two awesome committees. With that being said, on the park side, we are beginning to implement, Pam has a scorecard from the master plan, and she's assigned it to us like homework, like Paul's homework today. And we are taking steps to do that, and the Parks and Recreation Committee has been going through an inventory of our parks of what amenities they have to offer. We have onboarded several interns this summer. One, Cole, from Lafayette College, my alma mater, is back for the summer, and he's going to be working with some of the local interns to create an inventory of our parks. After that meeting, we then worked with Evan to, with Ridgewood Arts Council to kickoff. We're going to be kicking off an artistic portrait of what a park looks like. We're thinking of a name like Portrait of a Park. Now that we have the website, we can actually change the parks based upon season, so you could click on it, and we're very much looking forward to working with that and completing our homework from Pam. If anybody has any questions, please reach out to us. There was, everybody on both boards was there, and I'm very grateful to Nancy Bigos for making it happen. As several people mentioned, you know, Love was live and well in Van Ness this weekend. We were so happy to celebrate Pride. I'm so grateful to everybody who showed up, and Love truly won because it was a beautiful, short, and sweet presentation. We had several speakers. No politician spoke because it really isn't political, and it's not about us, and it was wonderful, and we have so much musical talent in our town. I'm very grateful to everybody who attended and helped promote it, the Ridgewood Guild. And as I've mentioned before, while Pride is one day with one celebration, Main Street will be celebrating it all month long. Our communications department helped us send a letter, so you might see a Pride mocktail, a Pride promotion, some Pride wear, and I encourage you guys to enjoy it and let Love win all month of June. In addition to that, I wanted to highlight that the MLK Committee, in honor of Juneteenth, is hosting a series of events at the Ridgewood Public Library. They're all on there. We started releasing them from the villages' side, and this is important because this is a chance to celebrate. We're going to be having a speaker and a series of events at the library, so please join us for there because that's another very important celebration. And I know that Ridgewood High School's graduation is actually on the 19th, so some of these events to accommodate the public won't actually be on June 19th. With respect to access, this weekend at the Firehouse is the accessible touch-a-truck. So again, neurodivergent kids sometimes have trouble participating in the touch-a-truck where there's a lot of sensory overload, and there's going to be, we're very lucky that our first responders are going to take the time and do this, and it's going to be awesome, and I hope this whole council- awesome, and I hope this whole council joins us. And this is Jamie Davis, took a month off, so get ready for a bender of an event, because she's well-rested and prepared. I also want to remind people that this weekend is the Sheddler House Tour. If you have not signed up, there are still some open slots, and we are still very much looking to tap into the community and what they see fitting in Sheddler. I also had a meeting with, let me see, with Fields yesterday, and Fields was somewhat fascinating. First of all, it's like school's out for summer. It's our last meeting before September, and there were several key things that were discussed. One, Ridgewood High School sports, it's the first time that every single team has advanced to the county. Our boys tennis team went undefeated, and I said it out loud yesterday, everyone was like, "Shh, shh, shh," but they actually won yesterday. Keith Cook reported a massive trend with the incoming class interest in sports. There are up to 700 kids wanting to participate, so, and that's about 100 larger, even though the class sizes are getting smaller. It was a really wonderful discussion with the whole group. We also, baseball did update the community, and I don't believe it's been said here, that they submitted their own positive petition on the Sheddler project and sent 1,100 signatures to SHPO endorsing the project, and I want to thank Scott Miller for showing up and letting us know that. And we discussed the lightning alert system and how we can expand on it and make the greater awareness for public safety, because right now, pretty much most people's first, like, insight into that is through sports, and we'd like to make it more general safety. And of course, the adult soccer were there, and they're very excited, and they were very excited to see their application of ROSA progressing. So Fields will not meet for the summer, so I kind of feel like I'm on a little bit of a Fields vacation. Let's hope there's no flooding or any incidents over the summer, and that's my report.
Thanks, Siobhan. Evan?
Great, thanks so much. So I do also want to echo Keith's comments, thanking the VFW folks. The Memorial Day ceremony was really fantastic. It's incredibly moving. We had a wonderful turnout this year. I know most of us were there. I'm going to encourage everyone, if you haven't been, to go think about it for next year. It's really well-done, and just really a remarkable event. Had library, a couple of things I want to highlight about the library. I'm super excited. The Ridgewood Library is now an official passport application facility. Monday and Wednesdays, they'll be available from 3:30 to 8:30. Saturdays from 9:00 to 2:30. I'm excited, because about two years ago, I used the same, the same service. I had to go to Waldwick's Library, and I felt sort of like I was cheating on Ridgewood. Now we have the ability to do it here. If you need to essentially re-up your passport, or, you know, especially with your kids, because those only have to, those only last five years, instead of having to figure out how to do it online or go to another facility, you can make an appointment, go to the Ridgewood Library, and they will essentially do everything for you, including take the picture. Really, really, I think it's just super, it's a super service being provided to our residents. Really appreciate the library taking this on, and now I don't need to wear a dark hat the next time I go to Waldwick to renew my passport. Additionally, Janet Phillips had mentioned it, June 21st, 7:00 p.m., there'll be a showing at the library of the documentary, Juneteenth: Faith and Freedom. Encourage folks to think about going. And summer reading is kicking off. Great way to win prizes just for reading. Go to the library's website for more details. As Siobhan mentioned, Ridgewood Arts Council met recently. We're planning ahead for next year. Definitely going to do the cupcake decorating contest again, another author, maybe some museum series, window decorating, a whole bunch of other stuff going on with the Ridgewood Arts Council. Looking forward to working with Parks and Recs as well on your project. Really super excited about the Ridgewood Arts Council. Also want to congratulate everyone who had a hand in the Pride ceremony. Unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, I had some conflicts with my kids' games, otherwise I would have been there. I know I've been the last few years. It's a really wonderful event, and I'm really glad that it went off so well this year. Finally, just want to remind folks, July 4th Parade, get your tickets, buy your 50/50 tickets. It is completely funded by private donations. Please go online, think about donating, think about buying 50/50 tickets. The fact that we're able to put on this just, you know, gem of Ridgewood, the, some, one of the things that we're really known for, and do without utilizing taxpayer dollars is really just a testament to all the volunteers. And for all of us who enjoy it, I would encourage all of you to think about donating and potentially buying 50/50 tickets. Want to thank Siobhan for being the first member of the Ridgewood Council that I'm aware of.
Look here.
There you go.
We decided to get you from both sides.
So I am publicly shaming the remaining three of you, just saying. But feel free to see me afterwards, I do have more. Paul, I think I only have about 20, so I may have to get more for you, but don't worry about it. I got you covered.
I'm in. And with that, Lorraine, my, my, my fellow council member who has also not bought a ticket yet, yet, being the operative term.
I'm going to pass, so I don't have another coughing fit, so.
All right, good. Are you okay?
In fairness, my friend Lorraine, she did buy last year.
I know she will. I know she will. She's good. Pam?
Okay, with warm weather, it looks like everybody's out and doing things. First, I want to say, the Memorial Day service put on by Post 53 of the American Legion was really a great honor to the fallen. And if you look across the street from Van Ness Square, they also put a window display of various military memorabilia, and it's very educational, well-done, and I want to thank them for that. Also, Linda Scarpa, thank you for organizing the Law Enforcement Appreciation Day at the, at the Lutheran Church in Glen Rock. That was a really good ceremony, and I was glad to be there. I wanted to say that the Ridgewood AM Rotary Club is painting fireboxes for the town. You know those, those things that stand up about every other street? Those are called game well fireboxes, and they need painting. We did it last year, and we're doing it again this year. If anybody would like to join us, we're meeting on Saturday morning at 8:30 in the parking lot of Somerville Elementary School. And I do have waivers for people to sign in order to do the volunteer work, but we had fun last year. And our route is going to be south on, on South Pleasant, down to Hawes, and then back up on Stevens and part of Van Dean. Let's see. Girl Scout awards ceremony on Sunday was so charming, and the girls who got their gold awards were so accomplished. I, I am proud of them in advance of whatever they do in life. It was so much fun to see their, their badges, because I remember getting, earning badges as a kid, and that's a great incentive to learn how to start, how to start a fire, how to, how to sew, how to ride a horse, climb a wall, all those kinds of things. Music in the park, the weather could not have been more perfect this Saturday night. It was great to just bring a chair and hang out and meet friends, and so I highly recommend it. It's going to be every Saturday night, weather permitting. CB DAC meets June 13th in the Senior Lounge in person this, this month. That's 8:30 a.m. on Thursday, June 13th. Let's see. Open Space Committee continues to have its 10 free park walks, and we had a walk in Habernicle this Saturday, and I was glad to announce that Habernicle Park is, will be fully paid off in the year 2024. Our next one will be, our next two, actually, two free tours for the price of one, will be this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Lester Stable. And this one's going to be really kid-friendly. It will be in the children's sensory garden, and also in the kid, in the green kids' garden. So, the two separate tours, one after another. And so, the other thing is, the Planning Board met this Monday, this Tuesday. We covered the blade sign ordinance and the expanded zoning uses that we've talked about here at Village Council, and they will be sending us a letter with their consensus. The, oh, and also, we circulated a, a spreadsheet of what we have accomplished in response to the master plan action items. It is not complete. It does not reflect everything that we have done, that the village has accomplished so far, but I'm willing to share it, and so Denise, I will send it to you. It is incomplete, and as I say, does not even reflect everything we've done, because I still need to hear from various committees, the library, et cetera, et cetera. But it is an ongoing work, and I will be making a presentation when I've touched all bases. The pedestrian tunnel, the tunnel that goes underneath the train tracks, this is a two-year project, and we are looking for volunteers who can help with funding and with the artwork design. And we've already applied for a grant, we have not heard back yet. Let's see. I want to thank the Recreation Department for the elders brunch that was held on opening day at Grayden. Every year, when they have this, I meet people I've never talked to before, and I just really enjoy breaking bread with people. The water looked so good, it was really tempting. I was, I was ready to jump in with my clothes on. The Pride Celebration, what an amazing testament to the openness of our community. And I must say that, in terms of understanding people who are different from myself, I have to keep listening to them and keep learning from them, and this was an opportunity to do that. So thank you, Siobhan, and your, and the committee. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Pam. And I'm going to try and run through this as quickly as possible, because the hour is late, but when I say that this is the greatest town in America, here's why. Just this past weekend, and what's going on now, music in the park every Saturday night, amazing. Movies in the park. Pride Day, which by the way, many towns, even in northern New Jersey, are still fighting to get. The opening of Grayden and the, and the senior breakfast, which as you say, breaking bread, in this case, breaking bagel, it was just wonderful. The Memorial Day event, if you haven't been, you're missing it. It's, it'll make you think, and it'll, it'll make you grateful. The Boy Scout Eagle, Eagle Court of Honor, magnificent. The Girl Scout Gold Award event, magnificent. Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, the list goes on and on. There are, there are a couple of things that stand out, they all stand out, but if you haven't been to the Holi, H-O-L-I, event, the Second Annual Holi Event was this past weekend, just outside of McMurphy's. It is a festival, festival by the Indian, Hindu, and Sikh communities. It is more fun than you can possibly imagine, but don't expect to walk away and not go in the shower. This is where they throw all sorts of colored powders on you, and nobody gets away clean. And it is just a tremendous amount of fun, and I have to tell you, the Indian community has brought a richness to our village. They have grown significantly in the last 10 or 15 years. It is wonderful. And finally, my good friend Joan Groom celebrated her birthday this week, and many in the business community went to celebrate and honor her. My friend Heather wrote a magnificent proclamation that we read. Joan has worked tirelessly for almost the last 20 years as the Executive Director of the Chamber, putting on all the events that most people think the village puts on, like, like the Christmas tree lighting, and all sorts of great things. Joan does it. And if, I will tell you, at her age, if we could harness her energy, we wouldn't need solar, we wouldn't need fossil fuels. The woman is a renewable source of energy, and I wish her all the best. And that is the end of my report. And with that, shall we go into our special public meeting?
So I need a motion to suspend the work session and convene the special public meeting.
So moved. Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
And so, this is the Village Council Special Public Meeting. The date is June 5th, 2024. The time is 9:37 p.m. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Whites?
Here.
Councilmember Winograd?
Here.
And Mayor Vagianos?
Here.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4005 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of Ordinance 4005?
Bond ordinance providing for archaeological surveying, soil testing, site preparation, and remediation related to Sheddler property in and by the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $360,500 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $342,475 bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the cost thereof.
The public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Boyd A. Loving, 342 South Irving Street. I would be remiss if I didn't stand up and say this, and that is, what Councilwoman Reynolds proposed was not something that you never do, as most of you indicated was the case. The CFO tonight confirmed that what Ms. Reynolds proposed is actually done on a regular basis, and that is, you look for funds that haven't been spent, you cancel those balances, and you use those balances for other projects. Now, I believe Councilwoman Reynolds proposed this months ago, but now, as the CFO indicated, time is of the essence, and you can't do this now, because time is of the essence. But you could have done it before, but you did not want to do it. It is not that it is never done and can't be done, it was that you chose to do something else. So again, I would be remiss if I didn't say this is something that is done on a regular basis. I've been attending council meetings for over 20 years. I've seen it done numerous times. In fact, I joke and refer to it as the old shell game, where you move money from one place to another. So I was somewhat upset when you got on Councilwoman Reynolds and said, "This is something we never do," because it is something you do, but you chose not to do it this time. I am against what is going on tonight with this bond ordinance. Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Reynolds.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing, and I just want to say that I don't think anybody said that it's something we never do. I know I certainly did not say that, and I didn't hear anyone else say that. So, public hearing's closed.
We need a second?
And so.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
I move that Ordinance 4005 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
Just one minute. The following resolution, number 24-183, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council, will be read by title only. Award professional services contract imported fill material grid sampling on the Sheddler property. Motion?
So moved.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No, for the same reason as above.
Okay. Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn the special public meeting and reconvene the work session?
So moved.
Okay. I'll take Councilmember Whites. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so, hold on one minute, so I can write this down. Sorry, I didn't write this down. Okay. We have now a presentation by our Affordable Housing Planner, Beth McManus. And no, she's not available?
No.
Okay. She should be on any minute. So why don't we move on to the next item and then we can come back when she's available? Please let us know Dylan, when she's available.
Yeah.
Looks like she is.
She's on her man.
Oh, okay. Okay. I don't know.
She's afraid she's going to get the Bob treatment.
Okay. So there have been changes to the affordable housing for the next round. So she's going to bring us up to date on what those new requirements are, what the deadlines are. I actually, at my conference that I was at in April, we did have a presentation on this. We have some very strict guidelines we have to follow and she will walk us through that this evening.
Good evening, folks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everybody. My name's Beth McManus. There's some new faces on the council, so I just wanted to quick, take a moment to introduce myself. I've been your Affordable Housing Planner for, I think about six years. And I guess most importantly, I helped you prepare your housing, or I prepared your Housing Element and Fair Share Plan and helped you settle with Fair Share Housing Center. And we have some very important changes in New Jersey about how affordable housing is going to be handled. And so I think the purpose of tonight is to, really twofold. One, to give an overview of what was accomplished as part of the third round. And the second is to provide an update as to how the Fair Housing Act has been amended and what that means for places like Ridgewood. So if you'd like, I can share my screen so that I can share the presentation.
That would be great, Beth. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Okay. So I think that should be up now, right?
Yep, gotcha.
Okay. Fantastic. So like I said, we're going to do two things, generally speaking. The first is to give an overview and the second is to talk about the new changes. So just very quickly, a little bit of background. Ridgewood, police would say, has a great history of affordable housing compliance and that means that, that things are always going to be a little bit easier because you don't have to play catch-up. And I say that because you guys were able to receive first round as well as third round substantive certification when the Council on Affordable Housing was still active. And then you participated in the third round consistent with the 2015 New Jersey Supreme Court decision that's referred to as Mount Laurel IV. And by participated, I mean you submitted a declaratory judgment to the court indicating that you wanted to, to participate and gain compliance. You settled with all of the necessary parties, the four developers as well as Fair Share Housing Center. That settlement agreement was approved by the court and then you later adopted a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan and that too was subject to the court's review at a compliance hearing and that gained approval as well. So you guys thus far have done everything that was necessary, just about to be compliant in the third round and put yourselves in a good position for the fourth round. So let's talk a little bit about the third round plan, just to make sure folks have a good understanding about your starting point. So the third round, similar to the fourth round, is composed of two general types of affordable housing obligations. The first one is your rehabilitation obligation and that's the estimate of low and moderate income households that are in the village and also living in deficient housing units. That obligation was just six units. And then the other parts of your affordable housing obligation are referred to as the new construction obligation. And they are, it's not so specific that it must be satisfied through new construction, but that is how the vast majority of credits are gained. And that obligation for your third round was composed of the prior rounds. That's your first and second rounds together, the cumulative number, which was 229 units. And then your third round obligation, which was 664 units. Now, Ridgewood is a fully developed municipality and it's, I think, quite obvious that you're unable to generate more than 800, 900, almost, housing units that are affordable, let alone the additional market rate units that typically accompany those. And that's not unusual in New Jersey. And in fact, there are rules that are specific for communities like Ridgewood and they allow for municipalities like you to take what's referred to as a vacant land adjustment, which is a downward adjustment of your obligation that reflects developable land. And in this case, you did that. You took that downward adjustment and it results in what's referred to as an RDP or realistic development potential. It was 55 units and that's almost entirely calculated based upon your developments that were going to be constructed during the third round. So those four developer intervenor projects comprised the vast majority of that 55 units. The remaining obligation is referred to as the unmet need. And you guys also put a handful of zoning mechanisms in place to address that. And I'll, I'll go through that in just a moment. So first, for satisfaction of your RDP, I just want to highlight the fact that all of the zoning for this is adopted. And as you'll see in a moment, all of those projects are actually adopted, or excuse me, approved and constructed. And in order to meet that obligation, not only did you settle with your developers that came forward, but you also maximized your existing affordable housing that, that exists in Ridgewood and also maximized the opportunity for bonus credits. So that you really got as much bang for your buck, so to speak, as possible. And in addition to putting these various zoning amendments in place, you also adopted what's referred to as mandatory set aside ordinance. And that simply requires that should, that should Ridgewood through redevelopment or through a planning or zoning board approval, permit multifamily housing where it's not otherwise permitted, multifamily or attached housing. It just simply requires that the village assign an affordable housing set aside to it. Not that the project must be approved, but that if it is approved, it has to come with an affordable housing set aside. And that's a really effective measure for making sure that you never get behind on your affordable housing obligation. You're ensuring that in each opportunity, you're capturing affordable units wherever they may arise. Let's see. And so more specifically, for your RDP, calculate, satisfying that 55-unit RDP obligation, as you can see on the screen here, these projects, if you recognize the names, I know sometimes projects have various names in a community. But all of these have been approved. The last four of them were part of your developer intervenors and the first three of them are pre-existing affordable housing units. And so all of this, all of these affordable units added up to a total of 71, which actually gave you a 16-unit surplus for, for that RDP. In the event that it increased and the village did not have affordable housing units to satisfy that increase. So not only did you guys gain previous approvals from COA when that was available, not only did you get that approval through the court process post 2015, but you were actually able to generate surplus credits that gives you additional insulation into the fourth round. And so as I said earlier, you also had a significant unmet need, the difference between your total obligation and your RDP. And while the unmet need does not need to be fully satisfied in the sense that you don't need to create zoning to, that would produce one affordable unit for every one unit of unmet need, municipalities are generally required to institute a variety of mechanisms in order to address some component of that unmet need. Here in Ridgewood, you selected a handful of zoning mechanisms or zoning amendments that would produce affordable housing should a developer decide to, to utilize that zoning. So for example, should a developer decide to undergo redevelopment or revitalization of some of these properties? And if that includes multifamily housing, they would be required to provide affordable units as well. And so these projects or these zoning mechanisms, while the zoning is, has been adopted now for a handful of years, I will say that they're still active in the sense that developers might still make applications before you're planning and zoning for approval with an intention of utilizing that enhanced zoning and providing affordable units. So the first unmet need mechanism is actually your B1 and B2 districts, essentially the Ridgewood downtown, commercial downtown area. The village had previously agreed to, and you adopted zoning, to increase the density for 18 units an acre, require an affordable housing set aside, and also granted a modest increase in height, up to 50 feet. In addition, you've got this B3 area along North Maple Avenue, right at the northern end of Ridgewood, at the municipal boundary, rather. This area was rezoned to the new B3 district and the density in the area was created to allow for a graduated scale that ranges from 12 units an acre to 20 units an acre. And as the lot size increases, the density increases. And of course, that also comes with an affordable housing set aside. The next area is along Gothel Avenue and that's actually the same zoning. It's a new B3 district with that same graduated zoning, excuse me, graduating zoned density that ranges from 12 to 20 units an acre, along with of course, that affordable housing set aside. The next area is the AH3 district. This was a new district created as a result of that settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and as a result of your housing plan. And it permitted residential development, again with a graduated density ranging here from 14 to 18 units an acre, depending on the lot size. And again, as the lot size increases, so does the density. And of course, that also comes with an affordable housing set aside. And then of course, we have Valley Hospital and this is the last unmet need mechanism. This is a site that of course is, I'm sure, very well-known in, in the village, along Glenwood Avenue and also North Bandian. This area was, is subject to a redevelopment designation as well as an adopted redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan, I will say, I want to note, is an overlay. And so it allows for the existing H district, which includes a variety of medical and senior uses and was put in place as a result of a settlement agreement with the hospital. It allows that zoning to remain in place and the terms of the redevelopment plan are simply an additional development option to the developer. And so this redevelopment plan permits residential development at 13 units an acre and it requires 40 affordable units. And so like I said, that is your last unmet need mechanism for the third round. And so between your various RDP mechanisms that have already been approved and are, and are in place and the various unmet need zoning, that really constitutes, I would say, the bulk of your third round plan. There's a, quite a bit of administrative issues like Affordable Housing Administrations, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that's also addressed in your housing plan. But I would say that the, the most important components are certainly, what is your obligation and how is it satisfied? And so as we turn away from the third round and now toward the fourth round, I want to go through how this, this new Fair Housing Act, or I should say amendments to the Fair Housing Act here in New Jersey are going to impact communities. And I will say, first and foremost, there are really significant process changes. And I guess the, the highlight is the Council on Affordable Housing has been abolished. Now, they've been inactive for about a decade now, providing very limited administrative roles to municipalities. And now the Fair Housing Act has finally taken a step to formally abolish the state agency. And instead of submitting either to the state agency or perhaps being forced to work through the courts because there is no other option, the Fair Housing Act created a new judicial process for municipalities to participate in, one that will actually be subject to rules and presumably some uniformity across the state. And so municipalities will submit their housing plan and documents generally through a judicial process referred to as the Affordable Housing Dispute Program, often referred to as the program. One of the things that I know is going to happen, as it's stated in the bill, is that there will be process rules created that dictate how municipalities should interact with that program, how the staff members and presumably the judges will interact with municipalities. I'm looking forward to those rules because it should provide a lot of clarity on many, many questions folks have about how this process is going to work. But unfortunately, the rules have not yet been, been issued. But I'll certainly provide the village an update when they are available. Now, while the Council on Affordable Housing has been abolished, one of the things the bill did was it did give certain affordable housing powers to the Department of Community Affairs, which is of course, the, the department that housed the Council on Affordable Housing. That said, their responsibilities are pretty limited in that they are tasked only with overseeing municipal affordable housing trust funds. The bill also expands some opportunities for interested parties such as developers to challenge municipal housing plan. It sets forth exactly how, perhaps not exactly, but it sets forth generalized standards for how that process should occur and makes clear that developers or interested parties can, can participate in a municipality's process and ask questions, not just in the beginning, but also throughout if they feel that a project is not proceeding as it's required to. And so it, I would say that that's something that often occurs now and now it's explicitly permitted in the bill. While we have this new program set forth in the bill, I will say that if there are any unresolved disputes in regard to the affordable housing obligation or how it's satisfied, it goes to a county level judge, which essentially is very similar to the third round, the post 2015 third round process that Ridgewood and every other municipality just went through. One other component of this bill is, I believe, that settlement agreements will be less common. In the post 2015 third round, municipalities received significant pressure and advantage to settle with not only Fair Share Housing Center, but also developers. And I, as I read the bill, I think there's less pressure that will be placed on municipalities to do that now. And then the last part of the process change that I want to highlight is while before municipalities received a substantive certification from COA or a judgment of repose from the court, now municipalities will receive something that's referred to as a compliance certification. That said, it is very similar to a judgment of repose. It's, I would say primarily new terminology. Okay. So let's talk about some of the deadlines. So first, on October 20th this year, there's a deadline. That said, it's not for municipalities. The Department of Community Affairs has been tasked with calculating municipal affordable housing obligations. However, they are not binding. In addition, the bill explicitly states that if the, if the department does not provide those obligations on or before October 20th, there are no consequences. And so while I think it's wonderful and I have high hopes for what DCA will release, I, I think it's important that every municipality take the opportunity to, one, make sure that they've released the information in a timely manner. And if not, to pivot and we can talk about what that means. But two, to review what DCA has put out there and ensure that they believe it's accurate. Now, right now, I have no reason to believe that it won't be well-done, but I think it's incumbent upon every municipality to review for themselves. Now, while we're going to have DCA release those numbers, knock on wood, on October 20th or before, the towns have until January 31st, 2025, to declare what they're, what they think, what you think your affordable housing obligation will be. And you'll do so via a municipal resolution by the governing body. That obligation may simply reflect what DCA publishes or it may be a calculation of your own making. Or perhaps another expert will release figures to the municipalities in hopes or making them available for them to rely upon. I think there's going to be a lot more information coming in the next several months in regard to those obligations, who's calculating them and exactly how it's being done. Following that end of January 25 deadlines, there is one month for objections to municipal obligations to be filed. obligations to be filed. Those objections could come from developers seeking to have an increased obligation in hopes of making more room for themselves, so to speak, in a municipality's plan. It could come from Fair Housing, Housing Center. It could come from organizations seeking to decrease the affordable housing obligation. But regardless, they have one month to file an objection and standards for how they should be addressing their objection in the program. Municipalities will then be tasked with mediating with those objectors to their obligation. If it cannot be settled, then it would go to that county-level judge to review and work through the objection with eventually a finding as to what the municipality's obligation is. Municipalities then have until June 30th, 2025, to submit an adopted housing plan. So essentially, we have between January 31st and the next five months or so, until June 30th, to put together the housing plan. That said, I do recommend that we start that process early, so that we're not scrambling in spring of 2025 to figure out how to, how to handle our affordable housing obligation. And one other point on these deadlines, when Ridgewood has to adopt a resolution stating its obligation by the end of January, that only addresses the total fourth round obligation. It is not required that the municipality address your vacant land adjustment. That is deemed a compliance mechanism rather than a, an affordable housing obligation. That said, I will say that there have been some folks around the state that have offered an interpretation that perhaps municipalities will need to address their vacant land adjustment at that time. Personally, and I think other folks around the state agree, I think that's an unreasonable position and inconsistent with the letter of the, the new Fair Housing Act. But I, I do want to state, you know, give that caveat that perhaps there will be an interpretation that conflicts with my opinion. I, I will certainly keep you guys posted, but that's, that seems to be the opinion of many of the folks around the state like myself that do this work regularly. In terms of exactly how that fourth round obligation will be calculated, very generally, it will continue to have these two primary components. The first one will be your rehabilitation obligation. Again, that's an estimate of the number of deficient housing units in Ridgewood that are also occupied by low and moderate income households, based on census and American community survey data. Your prior round and your third round obligations will be unchanged, un, they will not be recalculated. And so really, the focus will be on first that rehab obligation, as well as your fourth round obligation. The fourth round methodology is, is very similar to the third round. There are a handful of simplifications that have been put in place to try to probably ease the number of objections to how the obligation is calculated. But it's generally the same, the framework is the same, I would say. Municipalities will still be allowed to apply for a vacant land adjustment. I 100% expect that Ridgewood will take that vacant land adjustment, just like you did in the third round. There's certainly, unless there's something big, I don't know. I don't think there's any more or substantial amount of new land in Ridgewood that could be utilized, and so you're going to continue to be eligible for that vacant land adjustment, meaning that you're going to have an RDP of, of, well, we'll, we'll figure that out as we go through this process, but you'll have an RDP for your fourth round, and the remaining units will be your fourth round unmet need. And so in terms of how you will meet your obligation, generally, I will say the options available to you in the third round will continue to be available to you in the fourth round. There are some, some tweaks to how those, how those programs or how those options might work, but generally speaking, inclusionary housing and the variety of options through redevelopment, market to affordable, et cetera, that were available in the third round continue to be options in the fourth round. For your RDP, you'll have to satisfy that with projects that are certain. So if you recall in your third round, you satisfy your RDP with existing units that were already in Ridgewood, and with developer projects that you were currently working with, the developers of, of those sites who intervened in your third round plan. The unmet need, as I had said before, need not be fully satisfied with one unit for every, one unit of unmet need, but you're obligated to put, to put forth adequate mechanisms. Now, this new Fair Housing Act has moved that, has increased the burden for the unmet need by requiring that municipalities satisfy 25% of that unmet need obligation through, quote, "realistic zoning." Now, unfortunately, the term "realistic zoning" is not defined in the Fair Housing Act. And I, I do expect there to be litigation about that, as developers and municipalities fight about what constitutes something that's realistic. But generally, it's thought to be zoning that is economically feasible in order to incentivize what's most likely going to be redevelopment of, of a property, especially in a vacant land community. I will say that the bill also allows for municipalities to state that it's not, it's not possible, they're not able to do so, but I do suspect that the burden for making that claim will be quite high. I think that's part of, that's going to be part of what I hope to be new information and interpretations coming out as we get closer to the end of the year, in the time where we're really going to be sitting down and hashing out exactly how your fourth round plan will be, will be prepared. The most common strategies are inclusionary zoning by far. That was a strategy that Ridgewood used in the third round. But other common strategies include 100% affordable housing development. That's often done through a partnership with an affordable housing developer. Also, market to affordable, that's where an existing market rate housing unit is perhaps purchased at market rate and then resold to a low and moderate income households. It could also be for a rental unit, where the rental unit has a deed restriction placed on it, and then is only rented to a lower moderate income household. That's a, it's a very favorable program for municipalities, because it doesn't require new construction. That said, it is quite expensive. If you think about the difference between a market rate unit here in Ridgewood and what it might be to sell that unit for a low or moderate income price, which would be between $100 and $150,000, generally speaking. And then the last common affordable housing strategy are group homes. One of the things that's interesting about group homes is that municipalities are able to obtain credit by the bedroom, as opposed to by the, the home itself. And so as we think about bang for your buck, group homes really are a great value. Of course, there are some limitations to using special needs housing, like group homes, to satisfy your obligation, and I'll talk about that in just one second. So there are a handful of fourth round limitations and requirements. Many of these actually continue from the third round, and Ridgewood complied with in the third round. So first and foremost, there's a 25% rental obligation, and half of that rental obligation must be for families. That rental obligation applies only to your RDP. There's also a 50% family obligation. That typically applies to not only the RDP, as well as unmet need. Also, a 30% maximum senior housing. Now, that's, that's a change in the sense that it is increased from a 25% maximum in the third round, and now it's up to 30%. Additionally, we have up to 25% bonus credits, the 25% bonus credits, that's unchanged, but there are significant changes to what generates a bonus credit, and I'll, I'll talk about that in the final slide. We also have a 13% very low income unit obligation, that's unchanged from the third round, with the, the remaining affordable units being, of course, low income and moderate income, subject to, to their specific percentages. And then the last change of significance, aside from the, the bonus credits, are the length of affordability controls. Previously, it was 30 years for just about every affordable unit. Now it's 40 years for rental units, and remains 30 years for sale units. And so as I said, there are a lot of changes to the fourth round bonus credits. Previously, Ridgewood and just about every other municipality in the state, just about, utilized rental bonus credits to capture 25% of its credits through, through bonuses. For better or worse, those rental bonus credits have been eliminated now. However, there are a lot more types of affordable housing units that are now eligible, eligible for bonus credits, and, and so that's potentially a very good thing for Ridgewood. So for example, you get one full bonus credit, which means you get a credit for the unit, and then an additional or extra credit as a bonus credit. So one full bonus credit for special needs housing, like those group homes that I mentioned, market to affordable conversions that I described previously, as well as 100% affordable housing developments. I will say that you have to contribute a portion of the project cost in order to generate bonus credits for the 100% affordable housing developments. However, that's typically required regardless, in order to make a project financially feasible. There are also a much larger category of new bonus credits that are for half bonus credits. So again, it's one credit for the unit and .5 as the extra or the bonus. And so municipalities will get a half bonus credit for partnership with a nonprofit, sites within a half mile of transit, which is potentially most interesting to a place like Ridgewood. Senior units, although it is limited in the sense that only 10% of the affordable senior units in your plan are eligible for a bonus credit. You're also able to generate bonuses for redevelopment of commercial sites, excess or extra very low income units, excess or extra three-bedroom affordable units, and then lastly, extension of affordability controls, simply extending the controls on the affordable units that you do have for another time period. And so in summary, for this, we've got an increased affordable housing obligation coming. It's going to be released by DCA, hopefully no later than October 20th, but regardless of what DCA says, or if they release something, we have to declare what Ridgewood thinks its obligation is by January 31st. We've got to, in terms of more burdensome obligation, we've got to satisfy 25% of our unmet need with, quote, "realistic zoning." And as I said before, there are a variety of changes to the bonus credits, which may result in more difficult in obtaining bonus credits, but we'll really have to see exactly how your plan is, is structured to determine what bonuses, bonus credits you may or may not be eligible for. In addition, I think, I hope, knock on wood, we're going to have a lot more information coming. We're going to have rules from the program, process rules from the program, as well as interpretations from folks that are working in this, but perhaps from the judiciary, perhaps there'll be some information that they, that they release as well. So more information should be coming. Additionally, again, in terms of major deadlines, we've got January 31st to declare our obligation. We've got to submit a housing plan by June 30th of next year. And so those are two major deadlines to keep in mind. And then in terms of next steps, I, I'd like to make a couple of recommendations to the village. First, I, I recommend that you create a subcommittee. I often recommend that it be include, that it include governing body members and/or planning board members. And I say that because there are actions required by both the governing body, you'll have to adopt the resolution, you'll have to approve the plan for submission to the program, but the planning board has to adopt the housing plan. And so it's really important that there be a level of agreement between both the governing body, as well as the planning board, on how the affordable housing obligation should be addressed. There's also a requirement to submit trust fund information, and I'll be working with your CFO, perhaps as early as tomorrow, to gather that information, submit that to DCA. That's actually an early requirement later in June. We also need to start working on calculation of your RDP. That can be done without having any understanding as to what your fourth round obligation will be. And if you'd like, I can begin working with village staff, as well as your planning board folks to, and zoning board folks, to determine what development may have occurred, and if any of it is going to generate an RDP in town. Additionally, I recommend that we start thinking about potential compliance strategies, and, and that's part of the reason why I recommend the subcommittee. Of course, we'll be determining the affordable housing obligation, perhaps as soon as a few months later in the year, and then we'll have to determine compliance strategies once we get a sense as to what the RDP is, what the affordable housing obligation is. And of course, by a little bit more than a year from now, we'll have to adopt a housing plan. And I do want to note that while we have to adopt the housing plan by June 30th, we do have a bit of a break on any ordinances. They don't need to be adopted until later, later in this, late summer, 2025. But the housing plan, that planning board document, must be adopted by the end of June 2025. And so with that, I know that that might be a lot of information, a lot of dense information, but that's an overview of your third round and what we have coming for, for the fourth round.
Beth, thank you so much for that comprehensive and detailed overview of our affordable housing update. I was myself trying to drink it all in. I don't think I caught every facet, but I am certainly much better educated about it now than I was before you started. Thank you so much. You're so well-qualified and so well-versed in this area.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of Beth? All good. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Beth.
And you. And we are going to excuse council member Reynolds. She has not been feeling well all night, and she stuck it out as long as she could. She is a brave soldier. And with that, I'm going to ask the council's indulgence to move up the update to stormwater management ordinance next. These kind people have been waiting for a very long time, and they put in so many hours of work here. So everyone good with that?
Yes.
So we're going to have representatives of Green Ridgewood, as well as Chris Rutherford Sauer, our engineer, come up as well.
Let's go. David?
Paul, can I just ask, because after all of that, we have a to-do. Who, who's doing that? How are we assembling the committee?
Conversations with Beth already, and we talked about that she wanted a minimal committee. She wanted somebody from the planning board, somebody from the governing body, our planner, John Barry, obviously the village, the village manager, myself, and, and she, we're going to talk about that and set that up. And that's the steering committee, or the, the working committee that's going to be working on this and preparing this, even before we get all the new rigs and explanations from, from the state, so.
Great. That's excellent.
I know that Pam has already indicated in the middle of this, with great enthusiasm, that she would like to serve on this committee.
I had already suggested to Beth that Pam be the choice.
Yeah, I think she's, she's the obvious and enthusiastic choice. So we are very grateful and fortunate that you're willing to do the work that's involved in this, and what, what many people don't realize is the amount of work and hours that members of the council put into all of these things. So Pam, thank you so much for volunteering to do that. And speaking of volunteering countless hours, Joan and David, I sat with you, you, you put in, Pam and I sat with you, you have put in so many hours to this issue that is so critical to what we are doing here in town and the issues that we are facing with flooding. So I want to begin, and I'm going to end the same way, by thanking you for all of the time and effort you have put into this. You have educated me incredibly on the importance of stormwater management, and, and in a town that has myriad issues with flooding, this is one of many steps that we need to take. So with that, why don't you begin with your overview of what we need to do here?
And if you just introduce yourselves so that, for the record, and so we have it on the disc, thanks.
And make sure your mics are on.
Is my mic on?
It is, and, but I'm going to admonish everyone, you need to, you see how close I am to the mic?
Yes.
You need to speak, you need to get uncomfortably close to the microphone in order to be heard.
We already are.
You aren't even close to it yet.
Okay. All right. So I'm Joan Hubertus. I live at 164 Oak Street in Ridgewood. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Back in February, David Refkin presented to the village council Green Ridgewood's key initiatives, including our 20-point plan. initiatives, including our 20-point plan to address flooding, as well as our proposal then underway for the enhanced stormwater control ordinance. New Jersey DEP's Stormwater Control Ordinance defines the standards for treating quality and quantity of stormwater. Extreme rainfall events are expected to intensify, both in frequency and severity. In 2021, Hurricane Ida dumped, on average, 3.1 feet above FEMA's 100-year flood. The magnitude of inland flooding and subsequent damage from Ida was a wake-up call for New Jersey. Climate change has rendered historical practices in defining flood elevations outdated. Our own experience in Ridgewood proves this out. From September 23 to January 24, there were three four-inch storms surpassing our two-year storm. Last year, New Jersey DEP raised the design flood elevation to be FEMA's 100-year flood plus two feet. This and other adjusted design storms are the primary changes driving New Jersey's DEP's Enhanced Stormwater Control Ordinance. It is important to note, New Jersey's model ordinance reflects the minimum standards that must be passed. New Jersey DEP and other organizations such as the Watershed Institute, New Jersey Future, and Sustainable Jersey all encourage municipalities to go beyond minimum standards. The Watershed Institute and New Jersey Future each published their own suggested ordinances, highlighting key areas they felt important to be addressed. Green Ridgewood's primary takeaway after studying each of these ordinances is we need to move, we need to be more aggressive in managing rainwater to help minimize risk to our habitation, residents, and infrastructure. A key risk for Ridgewood that most municipalities in New Jersey do not have is the density of impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces such as driveways impede rainwater absorption. They also collect pollutants. And when it rains, these surfaces create large volumes of runoff, stressing our aging stormwater drainage system and ultimately contributing to flooding of Hoakus Brook and Saddle River. Green Ridgewood advocates managing rainwater where it falls, which promotes capturing, filtering, and managing runoff at or near its source. Her focus for the Stormwater Control Ordinance, first, the definition of major development. As the village is largely developed, major development is not common. However, expanding its definition would open the aperture for more projects to apply stricter standards for stormwater. The changes we propose are, first, reduce the area of disturbance from one acre to one-half acre. Disturbance comprises the impacted area of a property during a project, such as an addition to a house. Second, decrease regulated impervious surface and regulated motor vehicle surface from a quarter acre to 5,000 feet. Our next topic is minor development. New Jersey's model ordinance does not address minor development. As previously noted, most of New Jersey does not have the risk introduced by dense areas of impervious surfaces. For us, roughly 40% of the village is covered with impervious surfaces. CBD has well over 80. The good news, no, really, the great news is Ridgewood already has legislated stormwater quality and quantity measures for minor development. We employ these measures for projects that create 200 square feet or more of new impervious surfaces, which is better than most municipalities in the state. Green Ridgewood recommends the following changes to our quality and quantity measures for minor development. They are revising stormwater management to explicitly recommend green infrastructure, such as a rain garden. With the increased rainfall and the intensity of storms, the risk to our stormwater quality has grown significantly. The adoption of stormwater management measures that enable infiltration into the subsoil, filtration by vegetation or soil, and/or storing of stormwater for reuse significantly help stormwater quality in a way gray infrastructure doesn't. However, we recognize that there is a learning curve in deploying and maintaining green infrastructure, so gray infrastructure, such as a seepage tank, should remain an option. With 20% of our future two-year storms now reaching four inches of rain, expanding runoff detention capacity is vitally important. We recommend raising the current standard of one gallon of stormwater per square foot of new impervious surface to two gallons to address these larger anticipated storms. And our last two areas of recommendations deal with the mechanics of now having green infrastructure in minor development. First, formalizing the existence of green infrastructure with an annual stormwater maintenance permit. Second, defining the exception process for green infrastructure when full onsite compliance is impractical. In summary, runoff is a significant contributor to Ridgewood's flooding. Green Ridgewood has endeavored to endorse recommendations that will heighten awareness and action in mitigating increased runoff from impervious surfaces. In addition to reviewing the model ordinances mentioned earlier, we also researched actions taken by other New Jersey towns, as well as recommendations from stormwater management experts. Rain gardens are an important stormwater quality measure that is underemployed by Ridgewood today. Seepage tanks, our current go-to, do a great job of detaining water, but they're not as good in filtering out pollutants. Finally, managing rainwater where it falls. We don't need an ordinance to drive adoption of green infrastructures. Rain gardens are beautiful. They're a great way for residents to become part of Ridgewood's Project 1,000 Acres. In fact, the high school students are leading the charge here by building two new rain gardens, one at Fett's Field and one at Stevens'. Green Ridgewood is proud to be a co-sponsor of this effort. A special thank you to our sponsor, Pam, as well as Paul, Keith, Chris, and Matt, for all your time and support in helping us get to this point. We appreciate your considerations of these significant improvements in our ordinance. It is an important step forward in reducing our village flooding risk. Thank you.
Joan, that was exemplary. We really appreciate it. And again, I know you did not go into all the detail of all of the work that you did on this, but I cannot thank you enough because we are dealing with an impossible flooding situation. It will take many, many different facets to be addressed. This is a significant one. Pam, I know you put so much time into this yourself, and you pushed it forward, so please give us your thoughts.
Well, I really appreciate the research you put into this, and, oh, sorry. I appreciate the research you put into this and coming up with what's feasible. There were many other things you had suggested, and we're not going to go forward with those, but rain gardens are something we've already tried in Ridgewood. We have two, right? One at Habernicle and another one at Grayden Parking Lot.
Yeah, we also have a third down at Water Pollution. When we built the Sustainable Energy Project, we mitigated stormwater runoff with a rain garden. Like many rain gardens, it has kind of disappeared into the weeds.
Yeah, but they still function. I mean, they can still, they can filtrate the water and improve water quality. And I appreciate that years ago, Chris realized that minor development was happening and that we should be triggering our monitoring of it a lot earlier than other towns have been doing. And so I really support making these improvements to the required ordinance.
Anyone else?
I mean, I know it's late. We do get our packets. I feel like I should ask you a question, but it was so thorough, and I want to say thank you. I mean, every time you guys come, the thing that I'm taking away is that the storage and the retention at a local site is incredibly important, you know? And what I really like that Green Ridgewood is doing is they're taking this kind of massive problem and like parsing it down into more tangible things to do. So, for me, that's great. The statistic you said that 40% is impervious, that's huge. And that's, I mean, that's a lot. That's a lot of concrete. That's a lot. So, I learn something every single time you guys come. And what I really like is flooding is overwhelming, and I think everybody until the Columbia Students Game felt like overwhelmed, and this seems tactile and not like a cure-all, but like, okay, we're going to do something. So, I just wanted to say thank you. And I really, I just want to show you, we get like all your papers, and I can't even imagine what this ordinance meeting was like.
Meeting?
Meetings.
There was a long series of meetings, and Joan led us through the thicket of these regulations line by line, and we discussed them in great detail, and I'm going to support this with everything that I have going forward.
Mayor, if I may, just, I just want, I don't usually interject unless it's legal, but I just want to state that I attended many of the meetings. I was just very impressed by Joan and David's dedication, their commitment, their passion for this. The amount of work that they put on it was really, really exceptional and something that's almost been unequaled in terms of citizen participation and volunteerism. I was just very impressed by it.
Yeah, you know, again, I say it at almost every meeting, many hands make light work. And the work that you did, I laud those who try and build something, who try and make something better as opposed to simply criticizing. There's a lot of things that you can criticize, but let's all do something that makes things better, and that's what you did. You set an example for us all. Thank you so much. And again, Pam, you know, the work that you do in fostering these things, especially on your Green Ridgewood committees, is unparalleled.
Well, just because you did so much good work, maybe we should go forward with more, with a forum or two on how to create a rain garden so that people can really see what's involved.
Yes, that sounds great.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have a lovely evening. Yes, sir?
We're running up against the deadline to get this adopted.
We're going to introduce it next week.
You're going to introduce it, and when do you want to send it over to the planning board?
My understanding was we were going to send it to DEP because they had to approve it before we...
I did give, Joan, there is a requirement that of course goes into Bergen County.
Yeah, Bergen County also needs a crack at it.
Bergen County gets a crack. We're going to do that, I think what it will say after, I'll check that for you.
Yes, that's what they say.
But it's got to go to the planning board also as a lead use ordinance because that's what it is.
Well, that's automatically sent right after it's introduced, so...
All good?
No, well, it's sent to the county too, yes. It's sent to the surrounding towns, Bergen County Planning Board, and also our planning board.
Because it's not really a zoning ordinance, it's just a engineering aspect, but that's
That's it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you all. Have a lovely evening. And just for those in the back who sometimes some of our people testifying don't speak into the microphone, I think just a simple raising of your hand, you know I'm very sensitive to this, so if I see your hand, obviously I will then coach people into speaking to the mic, okay? And anybody else who can't hear, if you can mention it to that who was not here tonight, again, just raise your hand. I'll let everyone know. Thank you. And let's move on to Ridgewood Water.
So, our village manager has arrived, so I'm assuming he's going to take over?
No, no, no. She prepped for this meeting with me. I'm leaving it in her capable hands.
That's fine, that's fine then. I'm moving it along. We're going to move along so that we can get this done because all of these items have to be discussed tonight so they can go to the public meeting next week.
There you go.
All right. So, Michael Kors is here, who's our business manager for Ridgewood Water. Our first item is awarding a contract for the East Ridgewood and West End PFOs Treatment Facility construction. Five bids were received, and the lowest responsible bidder is Sovereign Consulting, Inc. of Robbinsville, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed $7,773,000. The next highest bid is actually $117,890 more. The funding is in the water capital budget. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions, comments?
Have we contracted with Sovereign before? Have we ever worked with them?
I am not aware of that. I can ask our engineering department if they have, but to my knowledge, no.
Okay. I know, you're relatively new here.
My understanding is this is the first time we've worked with them. The next one is actually two and three together. This is for a Ford F-600 chassis, regular cab, and then also the steel mason dump body that goes with the vehicle. So, this is a Ford F-600 chassis, regular cab truck under the state contract to Route 23 Autumn Wall of Butler, New Jersey, not to exceed $61,685. This replaces truck number 73 that was declared surplus in 2019. Also awards a contract for utility dump body for this truck under Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing to Cliffside Body Corporation of Fairview, New Jersey, not to exceed $31,566. The total is $93,251, and this is coming out of the water utility operating budget.
I know it's late. I have to ask, though, the truck this is replacing was declared surplus like five years ago. What have we been doing for the last five years that we need to replace it now?
They've been in a deficit, and they've had to make do. However, at this point, it has been approved in the budget, and so they would like to, it would better serve the customer and also comply with latest environmental and safety standards.
And it wasn't in the budget?
Yes.
It wasn't in the budget. Good.
Okay. And the last one is refunding a credit balance for water billing. The customer was receiving estimated bills. There was an overpayment resulting in their credit. They said that, okay, use that credit to pay our bills. They now sold that entity, and so they would like to have reimbursement of the remaining credit, and that's an amount of $1,108.99.
Questions?
I just have one question. Is it the sale that typically forces this when the business is sold? I mean, or do people... Okay.
It has to do, you know, basically when there's an overestimate, the credit is put on the account, and then that credit will go, usually they just withdraw from that payment to cover their bills, but at some point they'll sell, and they'll just say, we want the rest of the money back.
How many of those scenarios do we have, roughly?
I can't say they come up that often. I don't have a full answer for that right now, but I could look into a number for you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, just an idea.
Sure. I don't believe it's a lot each year, you know?
Okay, thank you, Michael. I'm going to have Bob Rooney come up.
Thanks, Michael. Have a good evening.
For the next few things.
You as well. And it was lovely meeting your family today.
So, we're going to start with the parking. So, there's a request for free parking on August 3rd. The Chamber of Commerce holds their annual sidewalk sales in August. This year, it's going to be August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. August 1st and 2nd will be typical sidewalk sales. What they're looking to do on August 3rd, which is a Saturday, is to really make it like super sidewalk sales. So, what they want to do is keep the streets open. Everything will be done on the sidewalks. They want to have crafts, chalking, hula hoop contests... They want to have crafts, chalking, hula hoop contests. The teams from RHS can come and sell their merchandise, dancers, magic act, face painting, jump roping, fitness games, all sorts of things, kind of like a staycation is what Joan Groom has indicated. They also are gonna advertise this as a great staycation day in Ridge Wood on social media. They are also looking for a mini touch truck by bookends. It's just gonna be like a police fire and maybe an ambulance just stationed there so that the kids could see it. So, what the request is, they would like free parking on that day everywhere. I did ask Bob to look into the cost of that. So, the cost, if it were everywhere, would be twelve thousand, seventy dollars. That's, you know, taking it for maximum amount that we could possibly get. But if there's free parking just in the lots, in the garage, it would be five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. So, I just wanted you to know what the cost was, but, you know, it certainly would draw people in if they didn't have to pay for parking, but I know that we do have costs associated with our parking utility, so I wanted you to be made aware of how much that would cost.
Has this, I mean, I'm, listen, I'm gonna be okay with it because I'm willing to just defer to the judgment of the Chamber of Commerce, but have we done this in the past? And I'm just concerned about people parking and leaving the car there and it actually making it worse for our businesses. Again, I'm gonna defer to the Chamber of Commerce, but...
And I'm so glad you brought that up. You know, every time a free parking day comes up, I, you know, I sound like a broken record. I know all the businesses in town, I know much of their staff, they know about it first, they get there first, they stay there all day, and the effect is exactly the opposite of what you want. They get there at nine or 10:00 in the morning, they park all day, and nobody can get a parking space. And so, while it sounds like the most wonderful thing, we do it for, in December every year, and I say the same thing every year, yeah, it's, you know, Paul, you're the Grinch. You're just trying to steal Christmas. This is a good thing, it's wonderful, and yes, the employees love it, and it's terrible for people who want to come to town because now, there is no, first of all, there is no three-hour limit anymore. Now, they stay all day. And so, if you guys want to do it, that's great. I will always, always oppose this.
Okay.
If I, by the way, if I thought it was gonna be good for business, remember, I'm a business owner in town. You know, I was president of Chamber of Commerce for four years. I got boots on the ground on this, so whatever you guys want to do.
Bob, what do we take in on an average Saturday in August?
I'd have to go back and check for you.
Okay, because I doubt it's twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand is the optimum, assuming everybody parked for their limitation and all day long.
Because in August, I see a lot of empty parking spots on the street, so in the lots, it's gonna be even more.
So, I wanted, I just wanna, sorry, Paul, dissent a bit. First of all, I love the sidewalk sales and I think a lot of people love them, and I think our downtown, you know, when we did the Thursdays this year, maybe we didn't get it totally right, but we have to keep trying. I'm with Pam, that twelve thousand, August is like dead, right? And I'm in town too, walking the dog because of blackout week at the high school, you know, where they say, go on vacation. The first two weeks of August are like the most coveted in terms of rent at any shore and the eastern seaboard, just in case you want to rent your house. I think we should try it. I really do. I mean, Paul, if you're totally against it, maybe we could make free parking just on the street and, you know, not the lots, but I think downtown needs us to try some things, even, and it's one day. It's one day and maybe we could see how it goes. And I'm with Pam, like in August, it's a ghost town, there's not many people there, and I really, I would love to see last year's demonstrated history for the first two Augustes in terms of revenue. If you, that seems pretty easy to look up, right? Like on average? Because I think twelve is high and I think you're gonna be much lower, and I think we should try it. It's one, one Saturday.
I'm a...
Oh, wait, wait, I have one more thing. Sorry, Evan. The other thing that I wanted to write down is that we did get some flack, well, Keith got most of it, for touch a truck being during the weekday. And so, I liked the mini touch a truck because we had some working parents who were very dismayed that the hours were inaccessible to them during the weekday, the one that was just held by the bus station. So, I think the idea, you're talking about the gap, even though it's not the gap anymore parking lot, I love that idea. And I think for people who missed out, and we did hear that a little bit loudly, to be honest, and I felt bad about it because, you know, it was nice for the people who could get there, but for working parents who worked on that day, I think they really wished it had been on a Saturday. So, those are my positive things that I would be supportive of this, but I still would like to see those additional numbers.
I mean, I love the events. It's great. And listen, like I said, I'm ultimately gonna defer to Joan and the Chamber on this. Is it possible to ask, I mean, I would be interested to see if they would be interested in doing just the lots and making the street parking pay? And again, I'm less concerned about the revenue and just more concerned about Paul's point about people just parking and sitting around all day. I think we're talking about voting on this next week, maybe ask Joan if she wants to respond to some of our comments, but I'll be honest with you, if Joan comes in or the Chamber comes and goes, we really want this and, you know, we're the experts, I'll cave. But I would like to see if, number one, they've thought about Paul's concerns that I share, and secondly, would they be, would they entertain just having free parking in the lots and leaving the street as being paid?
And then also, I don't know how you measure success in this situation. How are we gonna know if this really brings in custom to the stores?
Oh, well, they'll report on that. Fun fact, Joan came when we were on the Guild and in her prior life, Joan used to work for Talbets. And one of the fun facts about sidewalk sales, and they're no longer here, but Lucky, you know, remember how Lucky Sidewalk Sales for the shoppers amongst us was one of the best? That was Lucky National Chain's best-selling day for any of their stores, the three days that they ran sidewalk sales. And when we did, you know, with Borough Baby and other things, we will report back to the Chamber on the increase of sales, with how it went and things like that. So, I don't know how the restaurants do it, but the merchants are very, very into their reportings. It's a ring, they calculate the day and you can see it. And I know Tony went, remember we did this for Thursdays for late night? We suspended parking. He asked all the members of the Guild to like report upticks or downticks and they kind of collect it. But, I mean, all the stores have the ability to do it.
Okay.
Sale days are always successful. I mean, that's not, it's not a question of whether sale days are successful. And look, I would ask that this at least, because I see where this is going, because it goes this way every year, that Evan's point be taken because, and here's what I'll say, is members of this council, go there at eleven-thirty in the morning and pick a couple of cars in a couple of spots and take pictures of them and see if those same cars are there at four-thirty in the afternoon. Actually, go at ten and then come back at four. You're gonna see the same cars, because I've done that exercise. It's, again, nobody knows the parking situation like the employees, and they get there first and this is their opportunity to lock up the spaces all day. So, at a minimum...
We'll get the information from Joan, from the Chamber, and then we can report that back.
And by the way, this is Joan who is asking for this, who I said the nicest things about before, who I adore, who I think is the greatest. So, I mean, just take it where it's coming from.
Listen, Seamus is on it. There's a couple walks marking some cars.
Okay. So, our next items are under budget. The first is a review of the first quarter financial statements by Mr. Rooney.
All right, so I'll do this high level, and then if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to entertain them. So, under the general fund, some of the shortfalls that we may be seeing here are due primarily to timing, for example, Grayden Pool Recreation, the timing that bills go out for specific The overall results is, I'm sorry, overall results are approximately thirty-one percent of our budgeted revenues have been taken in the date, which I think is very good compared, considering the delay in some of the programs that are getting started. Any questions on the revenues?
Anybody? All good?
Appropriations, primarily the allocations that go to other funds have not been processed yet because the budget wasn't adopted till April. Incumbrances are not entered as well, again, due to the timing of the budget adoption, and we have the seasonal expenses that also are, would be delayed in charging back to the budget. So, with that being said, we are at forty-one percent of our anticipated budget. That primarily is the result of the pensions, which have to be paid a hundred percent in April, and the timing on some of the debt maturity. So, it's well within the guidelines that I would expect.
But, Bob, is there anything that's unusual or anything we should know about? Because I get it, like, you know, it's not always gonna line up that the first quarter, everything will be thirty-three percent, but is there anything in your view that can't be explained or we should draw our attention to?
No, not at this point. I think we're good. Water, actual revenues, we're twenty-seven percent of what we anticipated. Again, some of that is timing, the increase in the water rents, cell tower rents, as to when bills go out for that. So, again, I think we're in good shape on that. That is offset by nineteen percent of our budget to actual for appropriations. And again, it's primarily incumbences and the capital outlay and other expense areas that would support the nineteen percent. Questions on water?
All good?
Okay. On parking, we're thirty-four percent of what we anticipated. I think we're on target with the parking meters, investments being higher than we anticipate at this time of year. So, but revenue for parking is on target. And at the appropriation level, we're at twenty-four percent, and again, those are incumbences in the other expense areas that are still remaining and the timing on debt. Any questions on parking?
Good.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, since he's here, we'll jump to C four and five. These are both approved insertion of items of revenue into the 2024 budget. These are grants. One is for the local public health capacity program. The other one is for Safe Roots to School grant. So, we've been awarded these grants. They were not in the 2024 budget. This process, this resolution will allow the village to add the grant revenue and appropriation to the budget. So, it's a standard operating procedure, so if everyone's all right with that, obviously, we want those grants, right?
Let's go.
We like grant money.
Wait, hold on, sorry. I do, however, sorry, sorry, don't kill me. The Safe Roots to School, we still, Lorraine's not here, we had a discussion about this. Safe Roots doesn't include a tree replant as opposed to some of the other sidewalk projects, so I really want the grant, taking the grant, clearly doing the sidewalks, but we both had discussed that, you know, it's turning a little bit into sidewalk versus tree and neither of us wanted that. So, with this, I don't, with the acceptance of the grant, when are we gonna see designs on this? Because last week, I had to go and talk to a resident who didn't own the tree because it's technically ours, but they love this tree. It was forty-eight inches, and Chris was able to redesign the design, but because there's no replant, like, we don't want to be taking out a big tree. And I know this is a lingering grant, but the public hasn't seen the details and neither of our committees.
Well, it goes way back. It goes back like eight years, nine years, way back, like maybe seven years.
The design work on this project is being subbed out. It's not being done on the third floor. So, once we have that design back from the consulting engineer, we'll be able to do an assessment of what trees will be impacted. And we're even doing that with the projects that we're doing in-house. For example, the mayor and the deputy mayor were in a Capitol Projects meeting with us earlier in the week, and we were asking for a tree inventory on how many trees would have to be affected, for instance, on Clinton Avenue. So, we're taking that into account and we will be sharing that once we have an actual census of trees that would be affected by a sidewalk project.
Yeah, I'm not worried about Clinton, West Glen, fake West Glen, and, I'm not worried about them. The one that has already been marked out on the road was a Safe Roots grant, was on Morningside and Phelps. So, I mean, I just think that, it was saved.
I believe the tree was saved after engineering went out there and looked at the markouts.
Yeah, it was like the most driven-by house. It was like we had a shade tree field trip, but I'm all in for the grant and so is Lorraine, but I do think those projects, because they've been around for a while, should be put out in front so people can see it because the notes went on the door and that's where like the uproar came. Okay.
Okay.
But thank you for the grant, and I'll take it.
And then the last item for Bob is E two, authorizing the mailing of estimated 2024 third quarter tax bills. We've done this traditionally because we don't get approval from the state or the county for the overall tax rate, and so this resolution actually says that it will be done unless, it will be sent out unless we already have the tax rate struck. So, if it is struck, we will not waste the extra money to do two mailings of the tax bills. We will just do it once, and it looks like, according to what Keith was saying, that we may have the tax rate in time not to have to do estimated bills.
I am not a fan of estimated tax bills. I respect the fact that it's traditionally been done here and obviously Bob's charge is to make sure that we have proper revenue flow. That's his role as the CFO. I don't particularly like to send out two mailings if we can send out one, but it really comes down to the county's timing. This resolution that you'll consider next week will enable us to utilize sending out those bills if necessary, and if it's not, we'll do the traditional tax bill only, but that'll all be determined by the county striking the rate. So, I spoke with the CFO of the county today and he feels that they're gonna get this done, so we won't need the estimates, but he suggests you do the resolution anyway, just in case. Agreed.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. We'll go back to C two, awarding contract under state contract. This is for ten Motorola all-band mobile radios and two Motorola all-band portable radios for the Office of Emergency Management. They will replace or supplement the mobile radios on the emergency services, special operations vehicles. This way, they'll be able to operate on the new band. This is part of the village's plan to upgrade all public safety radios. It would be awarded to Motorola Solutions, care of Georgetown Communications of Congress, New York, not to exceed ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
What's the difference between a mobile radio and a portable radio? Anybody know?
I don't have that answer.
So, the mo, I believe the mobile radios go in the vehicles. The radios will replace or supplement the mobile radios on the emergency services, special operations vehicles. The portable radios are the ones that the employees or, in this case, the emergency services personnel have on their body.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
The next item is to award a contract under state contract for the 2024 police emergency lights, safety equipment, and other equipment that is put into the police cars. They are going to take equipment out of the retired cars and have them repurposed, but if, this way, they would have a blanket purchase order with this state contract vendor so that they could be able to take their new vehicles there to get them outfitted. So, it's to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill, New Jersey, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for the year, and the funding is in the capital budget for the police department.
And just to add to that, I was talking to Chief Lyons about this yesterday. The goal is to have two uses of the radios and the lights and all the amenities that go on a police car, two life cycles. So, two vehicles would be equipped with that same equipment where possible. That's the, that's the goal, and then it would be retired after the second car's retired.
Okay. We're now going down to operations, declaring property surplus, the Ford Explorer. The Office of Emergency Management is requesting to remove the 2017 Ford Explorer from their fleet. It's to be declared surplus and traded into enterprise for fair market value. And then the value of the trade-in will be credited towards and reduce the cost of a Ford F-150 pickup that will replace it and be better suited to their needs. It was determined that the Ford Explorer, which they actually received from the Signal Division, the cost to outfit it for emergency use would be too high. So, they'd like to lease a 2024 F-150 pickup, which will better address the needs of the Special Operations Division. So, this is to declare the Explorer surplus. Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, the next, the next one is accepting a donation of a pollinator garden at a Habernacle Park. As we know, Stacy Yantin, who is the director... As we know, Stacy Yantin, who is the director and owner of Health Barn USA, would like, her programs are run out of the gatehouse at that park, and she would like to enhance the southwest side of the gatehouse property, from the parking lot sidewalk to the rear entrance of the building. She hopes to contract with Garden Angels Landscape of Glen Rock to remove the overgrown brush, tree roots, and poison ivy, and then design, create, and install and enhance walking and sitting area, and with a native pollinator garden. This has been presented to PRC Board, as well as the Open Space Committee, and it's been given full approval, and obviously, we have our serious appreciation for this donation. The cost of the project is estimated to be $5,400. It may be more or less, but that's the approximate cost. So this is, the resolution will be to accept this donation.
Awfully generous of her.
It's going to be so lovely, especially because right now it's a little bit of an eyesore, so thank you for watching, Stacy.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, the last item is the 2024, 2025 liquor license renewals. This is the annual renewal of all our liquor licenses. As long as I get tax clearance certificates for all of them, they'll all be on. If I do not, then they will not, and then we'll have to probably have a special public meeting at the end of June, because otherwise, they can't open up on July 1st. So that's the final resolution.
Great. Everybody good? Good, let's go back to public comment.
Good evening, Boyd A. Loving, 342 South Irving Street. I agree with the mayor 100%. Bad idea to have free parking, particularly on the street. I think the mayor knows exactly what he's talking about. He's been in this business for years, and I see that that's going to be a headache. People, the employees are going to come, going to park all day on the street. That's the prime parking area. Customers who come in are not going to be able to get to the stores they want to because the spaces will be blocked. If you're going to try anything on that day and you want to give free parking, give free parking in the lots only. Mr. Rooney indicated $12,000. I don't know what it gets the taxpayers, what a $12,000 loss in parking revenue does for the taxpayers other than there's a loss in parking revenue. It does wonders for the business, but in terms of a taxpayer, it does nothing for me. So I agree with the mayor 100%. Don't try it. If you are going to try it, if you insist upon trying it, do it in the lots only. The pollinator garden, is that going to be open to the public, or is that in the leased area to Health Barn? If it's in the leased area to Health Barn, I believe it requires Green Acres approval. If it's going to be a new area for Health Barn, and it's going to be restricted to Health Barn customers only, that's also, I believe, going to require approval from Green Acres. If it's going to be open to the public, that's, you know, I guess that's okay, but if it's going to be closed space, I guess that's got to be discussed and be approved by Green Acres. Last thing I'd like to say is the residents on South Irving Street experienced a water main installation over the past couple of weeks. I'd like to thank the water department wholeheartedly. Everything went very, very well. The contractor was very easy to deal with. There were a few concerns about closing off Arden Court and Hawthorne Place, whether emergency vehicles could get down. That was all immediately straightened out. And I'd also like to thank, so Jill Fasano was very instrumental in getting all that done and answering all the questions that some people on South Irving Street had about it. Mike Junta, I called Mike Junta on the phone this Monday morning and said, "Hey, Mike, the street was left kind of a mess with dust all over the street. Within 45 minutes, a street sweeper came down the street and cleaned everything up." So I'd like to reach out and say, "Mike Junta, you did a great job getting that street sweeper out there. Everybody is super happy. Just wish everything in the village went that well." Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Mike is the best. Anybody else? No? Let's go to our hybrid access. Susan, you are up. You're still on mute? And there you go.
Hi, thank you. Susan Ruane, 705 Kingsbridge Lane. I'm calling in regard to Sheddler. I have to say, I did miss the presentation. I was attending my daughter's graduation. So I just wanted to say that I hope there's going to be extensive testing up there, because lead is not something, I've heard lead and mercury and a few other compounds. And my brother-in-law is a biochemist at Columbia University, so I gave him the preliminary results, and he's been advising the residents who have well water to start using bottled water, because lead is very, very transmittable to water. And there's children up there with, that are young, and it is, and it greatly affects the development of children. So I do believe that there should be a lot of testing up there, especially considering there's young kids, there's well water and stuff, so I think, and I, again, I apologize I missed the presentation, but I'm hoping that that was addressed with it. And also, I just have a, just a side note, well, it's also, I would like to see, depending, again, on the results, I think we also have to test Saddle River. People go fishing in Saddle River, and if there is lead in Saddle River, they need to know, especially the fishermen, because I don't know if these people take them home to consume, but that is something that is very concerning. And then on, off-topic, my famous footbridge, I know that June 26th is when they're supposed to put the, is supposed to be when the bids come in. Is that the date that they approve the bids as well, or is that just the date that the bids are presented at Village Council? And that's pretty much it. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Cynthia, you're up. Still on mute?
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
All good. We can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Cynthia Keith, 542 West Saddle River Road. So I just wanted to clarify a few points that I raised earlier, and I'm not sure if they were misconstrued. You know, I always, I just want to start off by saying that when I made comments, I tried to come from a good place, so maybe I'm direct and they sound critical, but if I'm asking a question, it's just a question. I'm not, you know, beating anyone over the head. Hopefully, nobody takes it that way. I mean, Evan, your comments were a little harsh. Obviously, somebody who's a vocal objector is not always, you know, we're allowed to ask questions. We're residents, just like you are. You might be sitting on one side of the dais and we're on the other, but, you know, if you're making decisions on our behalf, which, you know, obviously happens quite often, and with a project, a large project that's coming into our neighborhood, we're allowed to ask questions. And that's part and parcel of, you know, being a municipal leader, and, you know, honestly, you know, it's not always going to be a compliment sandwich, where you get something, you know, great that's said, you know, we're concerned. There have been so many issues, and, you know, we're trying to rebuild trust, you know, from a neighborhood perspective, and so I hope, you know, you accept that as my justification for why I ask the questions I do. So to clarify, the point I made about the woman who was the project manager for Matrix, I was in no way, you know, like, questioning her qualifications. What I was saying was, Matrix as an organization that deals with the NJDEP, you know, for them to give us some kind of, like, I guess, sign-off in writing when they say that there's no imminent, you know, concern to residents, you know, that's just a message she's passing along as a PM, but, you know, so whoever the scientist is or the official person at that organization can give us that kind of sign-off, whether it's medical, scientist, whatever. The other question I, you know, and you were really good about answering all my questions, but I still have a question around the illegal dumping, and, you know, is there going to be a scorecard? Do we have parameters around what chemicals they'll be testing for that? Because, you know, right now, there's nothing to go on, and obviously, you don't have to answer it tonight, because you probably don't have an answer, but maybe when you get, you know, additional details from Matrix, that could be provided to the public, because that would be really helpful, so that we know what the scope of the investigation is, with the expanded testing. And then I guess, third and final, would be, we discussed giving Suburban the wetlands assessment, and if the project is in abeyance, which is a temporary delay, do you want to reconsider going back to the NJDEP and having them do the free wetlands assessment, instead of paying Suburban, you know, what is, like, a little over $10,000? So maybe saving a little money, and that could be a good thing, but that was all I really wanted to say, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Cynthia. Does anybody want to make a response to anything?
I can, too.
Do we have...
Do you want to close public comment first?
Do we have additional public comment?
Nope, that's it. Yeah, Cynthia, I will now close public comment.
So through you, Mayor, just to Susan, the bids for the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, are due on June 26th. They'll be opened, the sealed bids will be opened by the engineering department. They will then be reviewed by the engineering department and legal counsel if necessary. At that point, Chris Rudis-Hauser will make a recommendation to the council of the lowest responsible bidder, which will be discussed at a work session, presumably in the beginning of July, and then that contract will most likely be awarded, assuming everything is in order at our July public meeting. So that's the calendar for the bridge project. Cynthia, just to clarify, and, you know, I apologize for not being here earlier. I think the mayor mentioned that we had a family commitment with my son's graduation, but the Melissa Fury from Matrix is, yes, a project manager, but she's also the senior environmental specialist at Matrix New World Engineering. And I would, I would encourage any resident or anyone who was watching tonight's meeting who has any concerns about the credentials of new, of Matrix New World Engineering, to visit their website, and I will tell you that I don't think you will have any doubt in your mind about their credentials to take on these tasks on behalf of the village of Ridgewood. It should also be noted that everything that Matrix is responsible for doing is governed and directed by the New Jersey DEP. So the letters that we receive and the correspondence and the direction we receive from the Department of Environmental Protection, they then have to carry out that testing based on the specifications and the parameters that the DEP provides. And the next round of testing that was approved tonight, as I understand it, will require Matrix to go out there and grid the remainder of the property into 31 quadrants, and a test pouring will need to be taken from each of those 31 quadrants. So I know there's been discussion about illegal dumping and other types of soils that, you know, may have transcended the site. This grid testing, this comprehensive grid testing that we will now undertake with the authorization from the village council tonight, will test the entire site, regardless of where the soil may or may not have come from.
And to continue that idea, I want to break this down. I may oversimplify it just a little bit. We pay them, we pay Matrix, they are answerable to the DEP. The grid that they are putting down, we didn't tell them what to do, we didn't ask them what to do, they do what the DEP tells them to do and approves what to do. The list of contaminants that they test for, we have no input on that. They go by what the DEP requires, and they submit a proposal, not to us, but to the DEP. It must be approved by the DEP. All we do, for the most part, is pay them. They are consultants that, they work for us, but they answer to the DEP. And Susan, as far as the Sheddler testing, we did spend quite a bit of time, I'm sorry you couldn't make it to see what happened, but by all means, I encourage you to go back and watch the tape. There is quite a bit of good information there that I think will answer the majority of your questions.
And through you, Mayor, with regard to Suburban, I have a call with Suburban, I believe, on Tuesday, as a follow-up to everything that has transpired this past week. My understanding is that the council has consensus to hold the Sheddler application with shipo in abeyance. Carol indicated that tonight to me on the way over here. So, you know, we'll draft that letter, and then we will talk to Suburban about what the next steps are with them, including the wetlands.
And I will note that tonight was a very special night, because Boyd said he agreed with me 100% on something. So, come on, did anybody notice? It was a good day. It was a good day. Might not happen for another period of time, but it's okay. We'll take the victory where we can, so, so, see? I'm right. Boyd agrees with me.
I say we end on that high note.
And I think so. Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.